Good morning, it's 8:30. Start the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we see justice for all.
I have an invitation for citizens scheduled time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there any? Are you going to move on to approval of agenda? Is there any additions or corrections?
Under regular business, item B, the agreement with B Pro, the software license agreement for the voting machines, that is not ready yet, I guess. So that will just be tabled until Vicki tells me it's ready to be brought forward again. So we can take off regular business, item B. That's on page four of your agenda.
Okay, approved as, the approval agenda approved is read. Consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approving of personal action notices, approval of human services report.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion?
I did put one more personal action notices notice on your desk this morning that will be included as part of the consent agenda.
So noted.
A motion of second, all those in favor, signify an aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried, routine business, approval of claims.
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, department head reports. I guess right at the top, county development department.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On the emergency manager side of the house, I survived my trip to South Korea. Now it looks like the more important person's sitting over there. And this next coming, this week is just we got a PPCC meeting coming up and I will be attending the Veterans Court graduation tomorrow down in Sioux Falls. Next week I will be going to the International Association of Emergency Managers Conference for about a week. Following week, we have a safety committee meeting. Of course, we have Thanksgiving coming up. On the 28th, I have exercise with the United Living Center, which I'll invite the commissioners to and if anybody can come to it. It's a tabletop and we had one similar to this a couple of years ago, but they've had some staff turnover and I've had some staff turnover, so I think it'd be a good deal. Starting into December, I've got Richard going to a recovery and local government role in Pierre. What it is with the state and local agreement, which I'll talk about here in a minute. The state mandates that we attend at least one course of fiscal year and this will take care of that requirement. But the courses are also good to take. And other than that, that's all for that. Moving on to the state and local agreement, which is required by the state and local agreement that I briefed the county commission on once a year. And we should have sent it out to you in your packet hopefully. And basically it states that everything has to be completed in a document from October 1st, 2017 to September 30, 2018. That's the federal fiscal year and that's how the grant funds are administrated by. Some of the change, I'm going to go through the main changes since we've been doing this since like 1994. One of the big changes is instead of the 15th of the month, now the reports have to be turned in by the end of, within 30 days of the end of the quarter. So that gives me an additional 15 days. That way you don't have to see me running down the chairperson trying to get a signature. Windows not a commission meeting. I've got, within that 30 days, I've got plenty of time to get it into the agenda for the county commission to review it and to get the proper signatures. One other thing that has changed is now my daily timesheets, I do have to have it signed by a county commissioner. And since, and that's, I guess this is a good discussion item here. Since all the pay stuff goes through central pay, I wanted to check up the commissioner and see, can I just grab the county commissioner chair and have him sign my timesheets for this report quarterly, or do you want me to submit my timesheets to you? The timesheets are a different format than what the county commission. Our, what we get paid for, I turn in through INCO. But what I have to turn in for the state and local agreement is the sheet showing all 30, 31 days, how many hours emergency management, how many hours non-emergency management. Does the commission have a, I have no problem showing you my timesheets, it's not that...
Is that for each month then?
Pardon me?
Is that for all, all months then?
Correct, that's for me and also for Richard, since he's also falls under the state and local agreement.
Ms. Pierce?
I don't necessarily, in order to meet the time period that you have to follow, have a problem with the chair just signing that. But I, myself, I think one of the issues is how we're balancing planning and zoning time with emergency management time. I think that from that perspective, it might be helpful for us to see the timesheets. Not for approval purposes, but just so we can kind of be looking at what's going on in the department and where we're using our resources. That would be my thought, that just maybe it should show up in the packet. I don't have any problem because all the funds go through the finance office, so.
Yeah, I've got no problem submitting it through.
Okay.
The big thing I gotta have is signatures. When it comes time to turn in, I've got to be able to get it turned in on time. It's the main focus I have.
Is there a certain time a month? Will it be like towards the beginning or?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for probably the second meeting of the month. Usually the first meeting of the month, I don't have time to get it done by. And then usually you guys have a meeting such as today, which is after the, after the minute. So if I can get it in by, by the second meeting of the month, the only times we'd have a big problem is if there's not, not two meetings in a month or some strange, strange thing. So with some of the timesheets, I've got no problem with that. It's by the agreement. And then the rest of it, we have to, we have to have a local emergency operations center and we have to have a backup emergency operations center. We have to have our pre-disaster mitigation plan. And I just got a call yesterday where the contract's about ready to be let on that. One big thing we're going to be doing this fall and this winter is updating our local emergency operations plan. They do want us to add a civil disturbance plan, which means I'll be working with the sheriff's department and the local fire department on a civil disturbance plan. And to be, to be an effective civil disturbance plan, it needs to include all the law enforcement in the county. So I'll get with the sheriff and then use his guidance on how to, how to contact the state university and then the local law enforcement on all that. And then the other one is a big communications plan. You've been hearing us, me and the sheriff's office both telling you that in the future, there's going to be this big radio changeover. And at this time, this fiscal year, I am working with Sioux Falls Two Way Radio and getting the radio frequencies and everything and getting all that sent into the state radio people so they can figure out what it's going to take for us to change over. And that would be, it won't be 2018, I don't think, but in the future, we're going to be coming, looking for some money for radios in the future. And other than that, everything else remains about the same. We're required to have a full-scale exercise once a year and we'll do that later, probably next summer. None of that's written in stone yet. And mutual aid, and I'll be contacting the small towns and probably going and talking to their city councils and briefing them on what our capabilities are. And that's the state and local agreement. Any questions on that?
Question?
Very good. Any other questions? That's all I have.
Bob, we had that meeting with the Midary Township on that breach in the Sioux River down there, that alternate course. Has there been any research on the water easements down there?
We, our staff is, as far as I know, just going through, working with the registrar of deeds, trying to figure out all the, all, in that circle. But we're really waiting for the township to come back to us and the township has been working with them as far as I know. And we'll contact the township later on today and see if they've gotten anything else. But as far as my office, we've got copies of all the vestige drainage rights, I guess is the way to phrase it. What we do not have, and we would have to search through the registrar of deeds, whether it's us or whether it's the township, would be the NRCS type stuff and the federal stuff. Game fishing, wildlife and all that. We do not have those easements. We would have the drainage easements per se that was filed in 1990 and 91.
So I did talk to hydrologists from Banners and he said it'd probably be no problem doing hydrology study out there because they probably have all the information in the house if we choose to move forward.
Yeah, I was, and I'll contact the township again. I didn't, haven't done that yet. But we'll, I'll contact the township clerk, I believe it's who
Wanda?
Is who the main contact is. I'll contact her and see if they've, because they had a, they was given some information at that meeting that if they fill in the blanks on some stuff that would also move forward. So I think that, get the township's information first is our best bet. And then I'll come back to the county commission and see if you guys want me to get into a contract. I'd prefer to try to wait to get the contract until fiscal year 2000, I mean, calendar year 2018, just for funding reasons. Either way it goes, my budget does not have enough money to withstand the big drainage plan with you, so.
I just wondered, did you say a date for that tabletop with ULC? I didn't get that written.
It is November 28th.
And you know what time that's going to be?
My quick answer is 10 o'clock, but I'll have to get back to you in case it, I believe it's 10 to 2, 10 to 12 if I'm not mistaken on that one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot for you today. I did attend the Chamber Mellon Vets meeting yesterday and they are going to start having, interviewing us on the radio, members of it and what different, what our different organizations do. So that'll be coming up here soon. And otherwise, I will be attending the Salvation Army on the 14th. And the numbers are pretty consistent, about 110 calls in, about 100 calls out. The number of veterans and welfare people have been going up a little bit as far as the number coming in. And we had 31 in the last two weeks and 32 on the welfare side. Other than that, that's what I have.
Any questions for Mike?
Okay, thank you.
Sonia?
Good morning. Stacy, is it your birthday today? Happy birthday. Well, I just wanted to let you know, we have moved. Everything that we were taking with us, or not taking with us, is removed from the resource center. And we've collected all the keys. Let me know if you want me to just take them back to the Swiftel Center, give them to Scott, give them to Tom, or if you want me to bring them up here. I know they planned to rekey, but I, we have all of the keys that we had divvied out to anybody. All the employees that were out there, so.
We have no need for those keys. You just will take them back to the Swiftel Center.
All right, I will, I'll get those back to probably Scott. Yeah, we moved some things into the basement here of the government center. Primarily things that will either just be in storage or go on surplus. There's a couple Achievement Day things downstairs. Otherwise, the rest of that stuff, after careful deliberation, is staying on a truck for the time being. This week, our Forage leaders met yesterday, our Forage Promotion and Expansion Committee is meeting this evening and the Extension Board is meeting tomorrow at noon. Monday is our Forage Recognition Event. I believe Stacy included that on your agenda. You're all welcome to attend our chili and, you're looking at me kind of funny, chili and chicken noodle soup supper. Supper will be served from 5:00 to 6:15 and then our awards will start at 6:30. And our event will be held at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. My after-school program gets underway starting the week of Thanksgiving. So kind of get some of our big things out of the way as far as moving, some transition, some settling, recognition event. And we'll get started with programming for the new school year, Forage Year. And our shooting sport registration will also get started. We're going to do an online registration this year using our fair entry program, which is the same program we use for Achievement Day registration and State Fair registration. And that will be opening the Monday following Thanksgiving. So we have a lot of little things going on right now in preparation for programming that's getting underway, so. Questions for me of anything I have shared with you this morning?
We, just to talk about the truck decision that we made.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just to get everybody up to speed there. There was a lot of the Achievement Days materials and
Everything we used to display our non-livestock, static exhibits, display cases, the former old commissioner tables, clothing racks, lattice that we used to hang off of, these black gridded displays that we use for photography and some other exhibits that can be hung off of those as well. Basically a semi-trailer full of things that came out of a closet in Room D and stayed on that trailer for a couple of weeks because it was 8:30 that night. By the time we finished loading that, we didn't have anywhere to put it. So Nick and AJ and Royce from Perkins moved, came out last week, Tuesday, Wednesday? But Nick had proposed, suggested this, maybe you want to consider leaving this stuff on a trailer in the meantime. So I communicated that information to Stephanie, who talked to Ryan, and at that time it was just decided we would use that long-term storage, storage option for those items. And then come Achievement Days, they'll pull the semi-trailer over to the Swiftel Center for us. And at that point in time, if we have identified a better spot for them or an alternative plan for storage of those items until the following year, we can do so at that time.
We just thought it made sense to do that. It is going to cost us a little bit of money for the yearly storage and that, but they can just take it from there, back it up, put it, you know, there, put it back on if we need to. We don't have to move it extra times from OAC to Swiftel onto a truck and back off the truck, so.
We were going to try to put as much of it as we could in the basement. Not everything would fit in the elevator or be convenient to haul up and downstairs. And there are some pieces on there, those glass cases especially that are, they've seen their, they've seen better days and moving them as many times as pop might be involved with doing so would maybe not be the best for those. So work smarter, not harder, handle them less often.
And you know, my suggestion to Sonia was, I don't know how many times those glass cases are going to handle being moved in and out of there. And so I think it would behoove her to go ahead and start looking at more portable display cases for the Achievement Day event. But for now, this is what we're going to do.
Anything else?
See you tonight?
Yes. Yeah, I'll be there.
Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have very much for you this morning. I want to start off with the data loggers. I purchased a data logger. I want to say it was in February it finally came to the shop. We got it put in the truck. The data loggers are not what I expected. And I'm not the only county, we're not the only county that's having issues with the data loggers. I'm relieved that I only purchased one data logger. So December 6th, I have Jason Hodges with AgTerra Technologies coming here to meet with myself and about five other counties that purchase data loggers. So we can all ask questions, find out what we can do to resolve our problems because everybody's got a different problem or the same problem. If we can get that resolved, there is still money left because I put in for, I want to say six data loggers. Only purchased one. But I don't want to purchase any until next year. Is there any way we can look at rolling that money over into next year? That's in my machinery and equipment line. Just so, I just kind of wanted to bring that up to you so you had a heads up.
Go ahead.
What would happen is your budget just would roll into fund balance. And then what we would do is a supplemental budget hearing next year to basically access those, that fund balance that, from this year into next year. So it is possible.
Just so you all are in the know and kind of have an idea of what's kind of going on here, so. Because if they're not going to work, there's no reason in wasting the money to buy them. A purchase and a piece of equipment that's just going to sit there, I don't believe in that. Otherwise, it's December 6th from 9:00 to 12:30, I believe, up in the community room. If any of you would like to come, set in on the meeting, ask questions to Jason Hodges or myself or other supervisors. You're welcome to come and join us. I went to the district meeting in Stratford, South Dakota with Tim Bauer and that's one of the meetings two of us have to attend so we can receive our grant, our $5,000 grant. Same, same information. The only real new thing was Japanese beetles. We had 110 Japanese beetles in Brookings. Nobody let me know about that. I knew we had beetles at Lowe's and other greenhouses around the town, but nobody told me we had 110 of them. They had collected 110 Japanese beetles. So next spring, we will be watching a little closer because they'll eat anything and everything in sight. I learned that at the meeting. I, nobody let me know it, so. Otherwise, information's, you know, was pretty much the same. Our gopher program has ended November 1st. I have had three townships turn in gophers, well, four total, but three had gophers, one did not. We have had a total of 656 gophers reported or turned into the clerk. And we've paid out $984 already. I anticipate our gopher program is going to be higher than what I've allotted. We've got the money and the budget, just give you a heads up, it's already up there. And I didn't, obviously people are trapping, so. Last thing I have, I will be attending the Safety Loss and Control Conference in Mitchell tomorrow and Wednesday and Thursday. So otherwise, unless you have any other questions for me.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki?
It's actually 8:55 for our first public hearing.
Move on to our scheduled agenda item, 8:55, public hearing in action, resolution number 17-48, a supplemental budget resolution. I think the open the public hearing at the 8:55? Is there anybody that would like to speak pros to this? Is there anybody that would like to address the board and proponent for this? Hearing none. Cons? Anybody like to speak against this? Is there any cons? Hearing none, I like the close of public hearing? And look for action to approve resolution number 17-48, a supplemental budget resolution.
No move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Vicki, come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
To give you an update on our office, it was a busy month. We collected over seventeen, excuse me, 16,400,000 in property taxes. And it went good and I want to thank my staff for all their hard work on making everything turn out good and balancing every day and so I appreciate that. The delinquent notices will be going out next week. We'll send them out Monday, Tuesday next week. So then it will be published in the paper the second week in December. So that will be coming up. Checked on the kiosk again, nothing different with that. I don't think they want to have any place that is going to charge rent. So the state hasn't found any place yet. So I don't know how we're going to be situated. I know there's people missing it, especially other counties and the university that they can't use it. So I'll keep you updated on that. And today Jenna and Kristen are going to an election workshop in Pierre. It starts at 4:00 this afternoon and it'll be on Wednesday and Thursday also, so they will be gone. And we have scheduled at 9:00 in a few minutes here, a public hearing on a malt, or on a malt beverage license. And this is just a name change, so we have to have a public hearing on that. And then after that, it will be the approval of all the liquor licenses. And I think everything was included on your packet on that, so. Any questions?
The kiosk, do we advertise where that's at and?
We, we have, the only thing we do is if somebody comes in our office, we tell them it's out there. And I think it was advertised when it was first put in, but we don't really do any advertising because it's, we don't keep it up. The state does themselves, so we don't do any advertising on that. Well, I don't know, this might be silly and it's not a high-traffic area, but we can make it high-traffic. I said, why don't we put one out at the outdoor, the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center? We could sure check on it. The only thing good is to have something that's 24 hours. Oh, yeah, sure. You know, so that's what, what most, or I think all of them are across the state is someplace that's open 24 hours. So.
But the only thing about it is a lot of times we're open till at least 9:00 or something like that, too.
Yeah, I can sure mention that to them and that would be something that, you know, wouldn't, they wouldn't have to pay for and it would be an option, so I can sure do that and see. It'd be better than not having anything. Yeah, exactly.
How much space do you need?
I don't know the dimensions. It's, it's pretty good size. I don't know if you've noticed out in Hy-Vee, you know, it really did free up their, you know, lobby when you come in because it, it does take some room, but I don't know the exact dimensions.
And like Stephanie said, maybe this is a crazy idea, but just brainstorming. The one entity we have that's open 24 hours a day is the sheriff's office. Would there be any place over there that there'd be a possibility?
They, I'm going to speak for the sheriff. There is not room over there. I don't think so unless we, when we get, expand maybe, but, uh, yeah. So, but yeah, if anybody else comes up with any ideas, but I will let them know about the outdoor adventure center. So I'll let you know what I hear from them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, it is nine o'clock. I'd like to open a public hearing in action to transfer an on-off sale malt beverage license and an on-off sale liquor license from Wagon Wheel Resort, Chuck Erickson owner, to Wagon Wheel Resort LLC. Uh, open the public hearing. Uh, is any pros that would like to speak to this? Anybody in support of this would like to come forward and speak? Charlie, if you'd want to.
Well, I really don't know what to say.
Just state your name, please.
Uh, my name is Charles Erickson. I'm the owner of the wagon wheel and we wanted to put it into an LLC instead of my name. That's I don't really know what to say here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do with it.
Yep, that's just need all the reasons, so. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this or pros? Hearing none, uh, is there anybody against this that would like to speak? Is there anybody that would be against this would like to speak? Like to close the public hearing and look for action to approve the transfer of the on-off sale malt beverage license.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. More discussion, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter three, action to approve the transfer of the on-sale liquor license.
Second.
And a motion and a second. No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, all right, thank you.
Marty, we got about three minutes if you.
We can bring it back.
I'll make it quick, three minutes. I'll get right into it. Uh, um, we, they had a saturation patrol over the weekend. And I think there was, in a 24-hour span, I think 17 were booked into jail, but a lot of them were, um, released. You know, when, when, when you have saturation patrols and have these extra events, it puts extra pressure on the jail and then it puts extra pressure on the state's attorney's office. So we keep each other busy. Um, and, and, and there was a big football game in town, but on the saturation patrol, most of those arrests had nothing to do with SDSU football game. These are just individuals that got stopped and they had a small amount of drugs in their car or DWI and really wasn't even associated with SDSU. Just a lot of traffic in town. We're having some issues with classification at the jail. I have an individual with a health concern. So this person is, uh, in a, uh, a four-bed cell, so I only have one in there, so then I'm three beds down because of that. So we're having some issues with, with, uh, uh, you know, I'm not terribly full, but it's just the classification is making me full. I said, uh, had three sent to training for CIT that's, um, uh, working with mental illness. It's a 40-hour class, pretty intensive, two jail staff and one deputy. The goal is to get everybody in the department with that, uh, a week-long training which will help us. Also Wednesday, uh, I have a deputy meeting and I have one deputy that was sent to a school. Uh, we are going to start carrying Narcan, uh, which is, uh, in case someone has an opiate overdose that we'll be able to, uh, hopefully bring them back. You know, it's not going to be if, it's just going to be when that hits us. Luckily, we haven't had an issue so far. A lot of departments are starting to carry Narcan and, uh, sent a deputy to get trained and then we got the first set of Narcan, uh, free, through the training and so forth. Also, um, we just received seven AEDs for, uh, our patrol cars. John Pike, uh, was instrumental in, in soliciting funds for that. So we got donations, uh, I want to thank, and we got donations from Fishback, Financial, Volga Lions, Larson Manufacturing, Verero and Basin Electric. And, uh, about $16,000 from those five businesses were able to put new AEDs in, in each car. We had our first kind of winter event yesterday. Brookings County turned out pretty good. Had a couple of slidings. I believe only one accident. The troopers were busy on the interstate in the Moody County, Lake County areas, so. Do you have any questions? Also the NRA, uh, I'm hoping that by the end of the week we'll have them. So I got, finally got ahold of NRA representative and he sees no issues, so. So hopefully I'll get that wrapped up.
Did they happen to say what took them so long to get back to you?
He, he said that he just, he used my excuse. Looked at the email and just didn't get back to me.
Okay.
Okay.
He buried it, I guess. That's what I used to say, too. I buried it from the other side.
It's 9:05, uh, action to approve on-sale liquor license renewals for the following businesses for 2018. Danceland Campground, Middle Creek Golf Club, Brookings Country Club, Skyview, Brookings Country Club Incorporated, Skyview Junction LLC, Norgard and Norgard LLC, Smoke and Pub and Grub, Wagon Wheel Resort LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of these establishments?
This is wonderful. There have been no violations, so that, that's a good deal. I'm really glad. I'm proud of them all for toeing the line. That's good. Yes.
And just one thing to note, too, with Wagon Wheel, this is now under the new LLC. That's why we did the transfer first. Usually this would just be a normal, regular agenda item, but we needed to do these sequentially, so I timed them this week.
Marty, do you have any concerns with any of these?
I did have a question for Marty. This is a great report and I agree that we should be proud of this. I was just curious if you did the same number of things that you've done in prior years. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller? Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have about eight minutes. I have back on department head reports, uh, highway department documents.
I believe Dick just submitted that report since he was going to, uh, be gone this week.
It's in our packet. Should we share that with the public? Uh, highway department report, uh, number one, both finished our asphalt patching last week. Dick will be on vacation until November 13th. Color repaired on Highway 5 south of Volga. This was the color that was damaged by a vehicle. Tractor was delivered to Diamond Moore to get the Moore fitted to the tractor. Claw was picked up from Northern Truck. Crew is busy getting ready for winter and hauling gravel. TSNL for Bridge on Highway 12 completed November 1st, 2017, and attends for Doug Wessel, Colin Schwasko, Dick Burke and Jeff Anderson. The new structure will be a three-span, 168-foot in length. The structure, the structure will be positioned with improved alignment with the river channel and anticipated cost is $1,453,595.50. Official TSNL report was completed by Banner Engineering and submitted with a big grant application that is due January 1, 2018. To thank them for the report.
Do we know when we hear off of the other big grant applications? I mean, don't we hear something in November?
Not until April.
This will be, this will be in with them.
This will be the one. What about the one, the second bridge?
That's in with this, too.
That's, that, nothing until April. Yes.
I was thinking we heard something in November.
No. April's when they decide, that's.
Seems like we missed a year. We've been talking about it too much.
Yeah.
Okay. Too much stuff here. Where should we move on to?
Regular business first reading?
Regular.
First reading, regular business 8A.
Regular Business 8A, first reading ordinance number 2017-04. In ordinance establishing the placement of a four-way stop signs at the intersection of 32nd Street South and 22nd Avenue South. The second reading and public hearing will take place at 9:30 AM on December 5th, 2017. Letter B was removed. Letter C, action to prove agreement number 17-77, a purchase of services agreement between the Helpline Center, City of Brookings and Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, any background on this?
This is the payment for the mental health resource listing that the task force, um, has been working with 211 to do. The board has already previously approved paying for half of years one and year two, um, of that project through 211. The, the city of Brookings is paying the other half of that as part of the mental health task force, one of the, kind of the first initiative that they pushed through for that task force. Uh, this agreement is just, uh, simply putting it in writing. I think, you know, the board had already approved it, but this, this agreement spells out on that and the city will, has already signed off on, um, their portion of this agreement.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action approve agreement number 17-78, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action approve agreement number 17-79, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to automatically supplement for year 2017 budget for unanticipated revenue received for donations for AEDs in the amount of 16,000 to line 101-4-211-4250.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any information?
This is just, this is the grants that he got that he was, that Marty was just talking about.
And these are the donations from the businesses that have, um, have donated money for the AEDs, the sheriff's office. This money then will be supplemented back into his budget to account for paying for those.
Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, action to automatically supplement the, for the year 2017 budget for unanticipated revenue for an insurance reimbursement in the amount of $1,852.71 to line 101-4-211-4250.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
This was insurance reimbursement for an accident that one of our vehicles were in, correct?
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have about one minute discussion on furniture, probably take longer than that. Is Mr. Pike, Marty, is John going to be here or?
He's staring in the window, but not coming in.
That's not him.
I know he had indicated that he'd be here unless he had gotten a call, an emergency and had to go respond to something, so.
We can.
We know what it's, yeah.
You can give us the background.
Yeah, we know what it's all about.
Probably got something going on.
Yep.
Here's 9:15, um, action to approve a funding request for the Christmas Kids and Cops Program.
Move approval?
Second.
At the same level as last year.
At, yeah, at, right. Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion?
So we're doing $500, is that right? And we have that in our budget?
Yes, yep, that's in our public relations line and that is what we have given the last two years.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Back to H, discussion and possible action on a quote for furniture for 4H office. Do I have a motion?
Well, let's, let's discuss.
Or discussion?
So, can you give us some background on this, please?
So once we, um, moved, we are, um, really lacking in spaces to put some of the things that came with us. I had been visiting with Morgan at Central Business prior to moving, just kind of like, what are some options? But once we got moved and, you know, kind of a little bit more situated, had her come out and take a look and kind of told her what it is we're looking for and how we might best, um, meet that need currently. So, um, she had put together two quotes of which I have shared, one for the main work area, which is this, the area where Kim and Susan sit and, um, includes some lateral file cabinets with a countertop surface to be able to work off of and a hutch above it for storing other items, the binders that we refer to regularly. Right now, they're just sitting there on a make-do shelf that came out from something else before we moved. That were previously stored in our workroom and then a, like a double-door cabinet, kind of pantry-looking thing that would have shelves for additional, um, storage of stuff. I mean, I was kind of looking for a file folder the other day and I'm not sure where they are. Um, the second, uh, ensemble of pieces is for my office. In my office, I had a significantly good-sized, uh, bookshelf, about four shelves tall and quite wide that housed a lot of my curriculums and binders and things that I referred to often. And right now, they're kind of stacked in some boxes and stacked in some crates and stacked and stuffed in some other drawers just because that was a convenient way to move them. But I don't have anywhere to put them. And so this, uh, compilation of things includes a couple hutches which would be able to house those binders along with, um, some lateral file cabinets with a, with a countertop. That's how they come. She has my desk drawn in there. That isn't part of this quote because that desk is there. I used the one that was out there. Um, I, all of it comes with the, um, options to have a keyed lock or a touchpad lock at no different, at no other charge. That's just how they, um, do come. And, um, our budget at this point in time looks to be able to afford something like this in order to provide some storage solutions for our office space. It does take six weeks to get in this specific product line. So that's why I have brought it here as soon as she made it available. It does take six weeks to get in this specific product line, so that's why I have brought it here as soon as she made it available for me, in order to try to do some of that off of our budget for this year. You won't see on our budget necessarily a line recognizing this kind of furniture, because in twenty sixteen, when we built the budget for twenty seventeen, the idea of purchasing that building hadn't really come to fruition, especially not publicly for the Extension Board to consider. And when we built the twenty eighteen budget, there was still a lot of uncertainties and kind of in limbo for how to move forward on that. So it's not included in that budget either, but there was some money budgeted for different things that won't be used. For example, some of my travel, I won't be going, I'm not attending the National Meeting next week in Indianapolis, and so that money that I did budget for that travel is available, and perhaps some additional funds too. But our budget is sitting well at this time to be able to afford this.
Well, if anyone had been out at the Resource Center prior to their move, you know that the, the size of the built, the cabinetry that was bolted to the wall out there was quite large. And if you have been in their offices now, since the move, you also will note that there is no place to put stuff, everything, it's, they, they, they're working diligently to try to get stuff put away. So, it's in our budget, I, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and get these ordered from Central Business.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Just a, a quick question, you said you're using the desk that you used out in the Resource Center for your desk?
No, I used a desk that was out at the Outdoor Adventure Center.
The desk that I had was just an old metal desk that was kind of bumped up to some built-in, so I had a lot more space. I guess my question is, is does it match the rest of this equipment?
It, we can select color for my countertop color that will match or coordinate nicely.
It integrates, it matches up well enough that it looks like a unit that.
Yes, yes. I have the samples in my office right now.
Put together exactly, I mean, I'm not opposed to buying a new desk and get it to match and make it functional either. So, you know, I just want to make sure it's not mismatched.
I think it should, I think it should be able to coordinate well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Use your judgment on that.
I, oh, I will.
I know, we were well aware that we were gonna need to do some furnishings out there when we move forward, so.
My question is, and, and I'm in favor of buying the new furniture, I don't have a problem with that. My question though is, have you been there in maybe your office? It's, it's that you'd already know the answer to, but have you been there long enough that you know what we're gonna need long-term? Have, have you had an opportunity to, you know, kind of get settled in a little bit, so you know the layout of what you want, okay?
Well, with the, we also would like to put some shelving in our, there's a closet in the, in the office that we'd like to be able to put some shelving in, that we're hoping that this will help to alleviate some of, some of the pressure of the space, so we can put some shelving in there. We don't have a lot of room to put much more in there.
Exactly.
So, where this is situated right now, we have some makeshift file cabinets sitting, and, and we've pulled them out, Stephanie was in the other day, it's like, why do you have those things pulled away from the wall? So we know what this depth will feel like in between, because it will be positioned between the wall and Kim's workspace, and to make sure that it would fit there, there isn't another place to make furniture fit well. And so, have we lived there long enough to know? Yes and no. But it's a starting point, and we, we just, we do need that.
I think we have to start somewhere, and I, I think we're, that's, we're not done. I think we're gonna need some less expensive shelving, because it doesn't.
Oh, yeah, just like.
Look so good.
Right.
In the closet, and I also think in that closet that you're using for storage behind the office that used to be the Director's Office, we're gonna have to put some shelving in there too, so. But that, that would be let, much less expensive.
Oh, yeah, right, like something adjustable or, right, simple.
Down the road.
More discussion? Call the roll please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Discussion and Possible Action on Quote for Mezzanine Storage Construction at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
I'll just quickly tell you that there's a couple differences between these two quotes. I think Stacy probably has two in there from Tim Austin.
I set one on your desk this morning.
That one, you can kind of disregard for the time being, because that is not reflective of mezzanine storage. That is reflective of storage below the south stairs in the archery range, and isn't, isn't as important at this time. There is an, a proposal from Tim Austin in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, and then there's one from Randy Fike. It shows a grand total sum of five thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents, but that includes the, the storage below the steps. I asked him to break that out. So, the mezzanine storage from Randy Fike is four thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, plus the excise tax. And they're both the same size, like seven feet deep by forty feet long. It encompasses two bays, if you will, of the mezzanine, starting on the south end. Once you get up the stairs and in a little bit, two bays with some shelving along the west wall, which would be the wall that currently is the steel-sided wall. Tim's bid is, would have a sheet-rocked finish, and Randy's bid has a steel finish, which is, which would match what you see up there currently. Randy says it, it, the, the materials might cost a little bit more, but the, the overall cost will be lost because of the labor involved, not needing to do. Taping, mudding, texturing, painting, et cetera. And it may withstand a little bit more ruggedness, depending on what happens up there, you know, people viewing, people just moving back and forth, there's chairs up there right now. So, it, it would also protect the wall, I guess, a little bit, have a little bit more durability against use. He, Randy's bid also indicates that if, there could be, you could add, maybe looking at adding three hundred dollars for a commercial steel door, which would match the doors that are within the facility right now versus a, like a residential garage door type of, of door. To me, I'm not sure that you, I don't know that it needs to be that strength of a door, if you will, but it would match, you know, I don't know.
Is this a security door?
No.
It's, it's just like the doors that go into the archery range, I don't think we need a door like that up there.
You're gonna have a key on it.
Correct.
Basically, it's gonna be for four H storage, is what it is, they'll just have a regular key, so we're not planning on installing the pass system on those doors at all.
No, 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 no.
Where will the door be? I got lost there.
Up in the mezzanine.
Okay, but where in the mezzanine will the door be?
The door would be on the, the forty-foot-long wall facing out to the range.
Leon, if you go up the steps on the south end, go up the steps, you take a right.
Okay.
There's a bay, you know, they're divided by those beams.
Yes.
Okay, the first bay we would be doing nothing with. The second and third bays would be where this would be, be built, and it's, it's going to come out from the wall, how many feet?
It would come out seven feet, it would still leave six feet between the
The wall and the mezzanine.
And the front of the storage space.
We have six feet for observers, is that what you're saying?
And, and walk through.
In those two bays.
Okay.
That's, so that's where it is. So the door would be somewhere in between those two bays. And then that still leaves the fourth bay at the other end with nothing done to it.
Those are, those aren't full, those aren't full bays, those are kind of a walk-up, you've got some room, so it's probably better off just leaving that space open.
Right.
That leaves three of them in the middle that are full bays that we're talking about, and we're taking two out of the three to put this, this storage area in. We were holding the third one for possibility of putting those lockers up there, but we're also hearing from feedback that they're concerned about going up and down, that maybe that's not the best thing to put up there, so we're still working on that idea. But eventually down the road, that could be used as storage area too, but right now, we're just looking at this spot, so utilize that space.
Now, most of the stuff that goes into the storage will fit through a regular door?
Correct.
Or do we need to do something like we've got over on that wall, a double door, so that we can get larger items in and out of there?
No, we don't need a double door.
I don't think it requires that size of a door.
I, I was just curious, and, and I'm gonna go with whatever you all are recommending. But over time, as we've talked about storage up there, I, I had a different vision, so I just wanna know why we're doing like a closet, is what we're doing. And you walk in and, and have the storage in the closet, as opposed to having storage where you open up and it wouldn't need to be seven feet. You'd have as much storage, but you wouldn't be using up as much space.
I think this is more of a walk-in type of situation, so you have more.
I'm just asking why.
Because we, because we need the space, and then also still leave six feet for, for the viewing or moving back and forth.
If you, if you have been out there, and have you gone in the office that was the former Director's?
Not recently, no.
Well, it's a path.
Yeah.
I mean, there is a lot of stuff that does not have a home, that will go up there, because those are things that they don't use on a daily or weekly basis.
It is nine thirty, we can come back to this. It's nine thirty, we have a second reading in public hearing on Ordinance Number two zero one seven dash zero two, in ordinance providing for the amendment of Ordinance Number two zero one five dash zero three.
Read the ordinance first and then do the public hearing.
And Chairman, I would have some changes I would like to make before. I do have some changes at the appropriate time that I'd like to see made on cursory changes and a few things.
You want to make those now or?
Yeah, if I could. On your articles in Sixth Administration Section, and I had addressed some of these changes at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, but on page six, in section six, point zero two, point zero five, occupancy violation, that last paragraph, I would advise the Commission to strike that paragraph, it's not necessary.
What page are you on again, Terry?
Page six.
Six point zero two, point zero five.
Basically, this is administrative of law that could change or fluctuate, so I would ask that this be taken out and just go by the statutes at the time. So if something changes in section eleven point two, we're not mandated to do something that doesn't comply with state law. So I would just ask for that to be stricken. That would be my recommendation on that. Also, on page ten, when I was reviewing this last night, I, I thought we had caught this, but in that first section, or second full paragraph, section six point oh four, oh three, Powers and Duties of the Board, we had changed to a zoning official, but as you can see, it says by an zoning official, so I would just ask that that grammatical change be made. I will give this information to Planning and Zoning when we're done. Also, on that same page, section six point oh four, point oh four, Appeals, Record of Appeal Hearing and Stays, Number Two. At the Planning and Zoning Meeting, I had asked that, in that last, where the, in that second paragraph where it says such appeal shall be taken within thirty days, to mirror the rest of the language in this administrative section, I would just ask that after the filing of the decision in the Brookings County Development Department, and I will give that, but basically, it should read thirty days after the filing of the decision in the Brookings County Development Department, so that it coincides with S D C L eleven two sixty-one. So I'd ask that that be changed. Also, in my review last night, on page eleven, in that same, I think this would be the same section, in paragraph four, it should say, "And notice shall be given," not "Do notice." That's ambiguous, I would ask that that be taken out, so that it complies with our S D C L eleven two fifty-seven. On page twelve, this is now in chapter six point oh five, section six point oh five, point oh one, Powers and Jurisdictions Relating to Conditional Uses. In number two, I would ask that we amend, "The zoning official shall notify and take out, require the notification," so just shall notify. As I believe that's redundant, we're just notifying. Also, my last change is on page seventeen, section six point oh five, point oh five, Violations and Penalties. Once again, we have a number three, we have some information that may change, and to keep it in compliance with state regulations, I would ask that number three be stricken. And those are all the changes that I have right now. I would also just recommend that the administrative section, as far as the Planning and Zoning Meeting as the Board of Adjustments, I would just advise the County Commission to do as the ordinance has been drawn out, and having the Board of Adjustment, and then going on to a review with the Circuit Court, just to alleviate some of the, it, it's just redundant to have the Planning and Zoning Board and then the Board of Adjustment. I believe that we're in compliance with this new administrative section, and so I would just advise to adopt as so written.
Okay. Second reading, Brookings County Ordinance Number two zero one seven dash two, in ordinance providing for the amendment of Ordinance two zero one five dash zero three, where, whereas Brookings County previously adopted Ordinance two zero one five dash zero three, which we adopted the nineteen ninety-seven Revised Zoning Ordinance in accordance with chapter eleven through two. Whereas the Brookings County, South Dakota Board of County Commissioner deems it necessary for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and the general welfare of the county to amend Ordinance two zero one five dash zero three by repealing the following articles. Article five, County Zoning Commission Appeals, Variants, and Conditional Uses. Article six, Duties of County Zoning Officer, Board of County Commissioner, and Courts on Matters of Appeal. Article seven, Enforcement. Article eight, Schedule of Fees, Charges, and Expenses. Article ten, Amendments, and replacing said articles with Article six, a copy of which is attached here to Administration, Chapter six zero one. General, Chapters six zero two. Zoning Official, Chapter six zero three. Planning and Zoning Commission, Chapter six zero four. Board of Adjustment, Chapter six zero five. Procedures for Conditional Uses, Variances, and Zoning Amendments. And Chapters six zero six, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances. Therefore, be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, that Ordinance two zero one five dash zero three is hereby amended by repealing the following articles. Article five, County Zoning Commission Appeals, Variants, and Conditional Uses. Article six, Duties of County Zoning Officer of Board of County Commissioners and Courts on Matters of Appeal. Article seven, Enforcement. Article eight, Schedule of Fees, Charges, and Expenses. Article ten, Amendments, and replacing said articles with Article six, a copy which is attached here to Administrative, Chapter six zero one. General, Chapter six zero two. Zoning Official, Chapter six zero three. Planning and Zoning Commission, Chapter six zero four. Board of Adjustment, Chapter six zero five. Procedures for Conditional Uses, Variances, and Zoning Amendments. And Chapter six zero six, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, adopted this seventh day of November, two thousand seventeen, Brookings County. After the second reading, I'd like to open the public hearing. After the second reading, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any proponents to this would like to come forward?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Bob Hill, Brookings County Development Director, and I just wanted to give you a synopsis of what you've got in front of you, and why, and why we think it's a good product. The zoning ordinance update started immediately after Brookings County adopted its latest comprehensive plan. At that time, as director, I sat down and looked at the existing ordinance that we had, and grouped several different items together to be heard by various subcommittees. I chose five articles that would be reviewed by my department, the staff of the County Development Department, and what you have before you is the five now, and that was Article 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10, and we assembled them into the document of chapter number six that's before you. We had first Planning District review it, and then we also had County Commissioner, and the Deputy State's Attorney, and my department has reviewed them, and what you've had before you now is the final outcome of that. And I will stand by if you have any questions specifically on what's in the item.
Any questions, Board?
Bob, do you have any comments about the revisions that Terry made?
No, by all means, we welcome any input from our legal counsel, obviously, and we've gone through the document, I can't tell you how many times, and we're always catching typographical errors, and we will continue to work to stop that, but...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
The zoning board has gone through this and looked at this, and had input on this also?
Correct, the zoning board has reviewed the document, and has had the opportunity to provide input.
Okay, Bob, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more proponents? Any more proponents? Hearing none? Anybody would like to speak, con on this, against it? Anybody would like to step forward? Please just state your name.
My name is Catherine Carter, I'm a Brookings County resident. Did the commissioners all receive my written comments? I would like to suggest for future hearings of this nature, that the commissioners consider holding these hearings at a time when they are more accessible to the public. Holding a hearing on revisions which might seriously affect the lives and property of many citizens of this county at a time when, you know, many people are working the morning of a weekday is not likely to solicit maximum public input. So I would ask that you consider holding meetings at a time more accessible to the public. I would also ask that when a citizen submits written comments that you do as the Planning and Zoning Board does, and post those on your agenda, it can easily be linked within the agenda, so that anyone examining the agenda, any member of the public can also see those written comments, because how much time do I have? Five minutes?
Yep.
Because it's difficult to get all those into five spoken minutes sometimes. The revisions proposed by your legal counsel, in section 6.05.05, the deletion of item number three there, Ms. Nesswold referred to changes, some legal changes, that she recommends that change, this deletion. I am unaware of those, the public in general, I think, is unaware of those. I ask that you refer this back to the Planning and Zoning Board for reconsideration, and for an opportunity for citizens to consider that. Now, addressing the comments that I made to you in writing, this revision would eliminate, would take away the opportunity for the public to appeal at the local level, at the county level, a decision by the Planning and Zoning Board. As the ordinance currently stands, those appeals can be made to the Board of Adjustment. Granted, that's the same folks, but that can also be modified by setting up a different board. For example, in many counties, the county commissioners serve as the Board of Adjustment, and appeals can be made directly to the county commissioners. I would advocate that, that that change be made for Brookings. If the public had abused this right by repeatedly challenging Planning and Zoning Commission decisions on conditional use permits, if the Planning and Zoning Commission were burdened by excessive appeals of these decisions, then I could really understand their reluctance. But in the three years that I've been following these decisions, there's been only one appeal to the Board of Adjustment, and I suspect if we go back farther, there would be an even lower rate of appeal of Planning and Zoning Commission decisions. So when you take this away, though, that leaves the public with only the ability to appeal to the Circuit Court. Now, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not an elected board, it is an appointed board, the one representative, Commissioner Pierce, is the only one of the nine who is elected, right? I think you're taking away a serious option of the public, which has not been abused by the public, and the public by this revision would lose the opportunity for input, and the opportunity for local control. The notification times are inadequate, they are flat, too little, all right? They need to be expanded. Property values are not specifically mentioned in the current ordinance, and they need to be. Some ordinance members apparently, and they have expressed that they do not think they should even consider the property values of nearby landowners in granting a conditional use permit. This needs to be clarified in the ordinance, and it is something that I think most citizens would really like to see considered when they look at conditional use applications. This morning, a gentleman appeared before you at a hearing for the transfer of a liquor license to himself, as he had incorporated his business, right? As the revision currently stands, conditional use permits can be transferred with simply a letter of agreement by the applicant. Can you, I ask that you please try to understand why I see that as a contradiction, that we would have a, hold a public hearing before the County Commission to transfer a liquor license to the same gentleman, and yet not hold a public hearing to transfer a conditional use permit for something like concentrated animal feeding operation, or a junkyard, or a sewage treatment plant? That doesn't make sense to me. So I ask you to make these considerations. I ask you more broadly to refer all of these revisions back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, superficially, I grant that it does appear that there's been ample input by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and citizens in examining these. However, by statements of the commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Board, it is apparent, and when I examine all of these, and I examine multiple ordinances across multiple counties, I am struck by the homogeneity and uniformity of phrase and of intent across all of these counties. These are written largely by First District. Now, I appreciate expertise, I admire expertise, I'm the first one to complain at a lack of And maybe if we allow First District to write all our ordinances, you know, forty thousand bucks a year is probably a bargain, right? But that comes at the cost, also, of a loss of the voice of the citizens. I ask that the Commission refer these ordinances back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ask for increased citizen input in redrafting these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents like to come forward?
Good morning, on a beautiful spring day in South Dakota.
Could you state your name, please?
Lowell Slider, Brookings County resident, northeast of town here. Got a couple of questions, make sure that I'm understanding the picture right. Currently, right now, if appeal is made, it goes from the zoning board to the Board of Adjustment? Is that correct?
No.
That's kind of like letting the fox rule on who gets in the chicken house, so I applaud you for looking at that. But I think it's important that it not force a person on appeal. If I'm reading the new ordinance, revised ordinance, the appeal goes to court, and we have no intermediate step there. And I think that's wrong. I think you, as the County Commission, are the people that are elected to hear those kinds of things, and if you rule on it, and it's not satisfied, and then they can go on to court. But why should the citizen have to go spend money, just because he doesn't agree with what a appointed board decided? So I'd like you to take a real hard look at that, I think we need to keep that local step in there, as the lady before said, so that we have a local hearing on appeals for those. Thank you.
Royce Emrick, Brookings and Trenton Township. My comments all reference conditional use permits, which I shall refer to simply as CUPs. Having been required to defend my property from the assault of two major CAFOs in the past, once very recently, I am especially sensitive to what I perceive to be deficiencies in the proposed revised ordinance. I shall touch upon five areas of concern, not in particular order. The first is in regard to transferability of the CUPs. At a Planning and Zoning hearing, I believe it was, Commissioner Pierce suggested including yes/no boxes that could be checked indicating if a CUP is to be transferable. This would allow for a business such as a gravel pit, and certain other businesses, to be made transferable. On the other hand, a CAFO, where acceptability is largely dependent on the reputation of the owner, could be made non-transferable without a hearing. The second item of concern of five is the notification period. The revised ordinance calls for a ten-day notification, but since Planning and Zoning has indicated that they have most regularly met a fourteen-day notification period, I recommend making that official by substituting fourteen days every place in the ordinance where ten days is stated. This would allow the meeting of required publication schedules, while having no negative effect on the CUP applicant. The third item would be who should receive notification. Presently, only adjacent and abutting landowners receive notification of a pending CUP. Since the influence of many projects requiring a CUP extend much farther than the adjacent land, notification to property owners within a greater range is desired. While the influence of projects requiring a CUP is generally recognized to extend to three miles, compromising on two miles for notification would not be unreasonable. Item number four, the CUP first considered by the zoning board with possible appeal to the Board of Adjustment. In view of the limited notification period, if a CUP is first heard by Planning and Zoning, an appeal to the Board of Adjustment would allow time for additional discovery before final approving of the permit. This may avoid the time-consuming and costly appeal to Circuit Court. I recommend adding language clarifying that decisions of Planning and Zoning may be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. This should not be a great imposition, since not all decisions of Planning and Zoning would necessarily be appealed. At the September 21st Planning and Zoning meeting, with only seven of nine board members present, I think they were in the, farmers were in the middle of soybean harvest at that time, with only seven board members present, seven of the nine, having a CUP first heard by Planning and Zoning, with the possibility of an appeal to Board of Adjustment, received a majority vote, but a supermajority was required for passing. Item number five, the composition of the Board of Adjustment. The often-heard argument that the Board of Adjustment is composed of the same people as the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they are unlikely to change their vote, would justify having the County Commission serve as the Board of Adjustment. This would provide an opportunity for the CUP applicant to be heard on appeal by a Board of Elected Representatives, rather than those that have been appointed to the Planning and Zoning with no input from county residents. Elected representatives would be expected to be more responsive to the concerns of the consistence. I appreciate you having heard me, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Marth Snobatley, Brookings City and County resident. I just want to focus on the issue of the appeals process, and want to echo what the previous speakers have stated. I think it's very important to have a local avenue here for the appeals process. This is part of good citizenship and good government. Either revert it back to the original language, where it goes back to the Board of Adjustment, even though those are the same people, or a better avenue would be create a separate Board of Adjustment, either by appointing an entirely different group of people to sit on the board, or just having you, as the County Commissioners, step in and serve as the Board of Adjustment. So I strongly encourage that you really look at keeping a local appeals process in this ordinance.
Any other opponents would like to speak? Any other opponents would like to speak? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Look for action to approve ordinance number 2017-02, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance number 2015-03. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion, and I too am concerned about the issue of transferability of conditional use permits, and this was something that was discussed at Planning and Zoning, and Planning and Zoning decided to leave it as it was. But I have some real concerns, having spent three years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and having watched in multiple situations where we've had applicants that have come and asked for a conditional use permit with the intention that, once the permit was issued, that they would be assigning that or selling that permit to another entity. And I have a concern, that's one concern I have about the fact that... And I have a concern, that's one concern I have about the fact that we don't make our, that we don't require people to come back and ask permission to transfer the conditional use permit. In other situations, and it's not always CAFOs that we're talking about, we're talking about conditional use permits for a lot of different things. There's been a lot of conversation in the county in the last few weeks regarding mining, for example. And if a mining entity was going to be selling their business, and if there had been problems with that mining interest, or if there were things that because of changes in environmental law or in what we, as a society, expect for environmental issues, or even for the growth of a city nearby, that type of operation, we never, if we don't, if we allow permits to be transferable without people coming back in, we never have an opportunity to look at it again and to fix a problem if there is. And I'm not saying there always is a problem. But I think we, as the county governance entity, need to be able to maintain some control over what happens to conditional use permits that can remain in place for decades. The other issue that I have on the transferability, I don't think that this would be out of line. As one of our speakers said, liquor licenses, if you want to transfer your liquor license, you come in and you ask permission to do that. Then if there are any issues, we have an opportunity to discuss that and we fix it. I have submitted to each of you a copy of a proposed amendment. I don't know, Stacy, if you could put that up so the people in the audience could read that. But what I am making a motion now to amend section 6.05.01, which is on page 13, item 10 of the ordinance, to read, "A conditional use permit shall not be automatically transferable. A potential subsequent permiss must apply to the board of adjustments for authority to have the permit transferred. At the hearing on the transfer, the board of adjustments shall consider all of the same factors considered when the permit was originally granted, and shall determine whether any additional terms should be added to the conditional use permit if grant," and it should say "if granted" behind there. And that would be my motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Have a motion and a second on the amendment? Any further discussion?
Just a question, what impact would that then have on the sale of something?
It would be similar to my way of thinking as if you were going to sell a piece of real estate, and you make your purchase agreement conditioned upon the transfer of the conditional use permit.
Pretty common. I guess, you know, I agree with you. I think this is, I'm just wondering if this goes too far. What? Yeah, it is. If this goes too, I mean, at the hearing of the transfer board, it tells what the board of adjustment has to consider. I think the first part is good. The conditional use permit shall be not automatically transferred. A potential subsequent permiss must apply to the board of adjustment for authority to transfer the permit. I'm not sure, we need to keep going further and tell them what they have to consider. I think that would be brought up, that would be in the hearings. They could ask questions if there's problems. Those things can be considered. If there's no problems, I just don't know if we need to have that extra sentences in there, I guess.
And I'm not necessarily opposed if that's what this group wants to do, to take that out. I'll tell you the reason I put that in there, okay? Is in our ordinance, if you look at page 13, the ordinance sets out what it is, and actually it's on pages 11 and 12, sets out what the board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to consider when granting a conditional use permit. And that's all laid out in the ordinance to give direction to the board so that they would know that they have authority. I have that in there so they know they have authority to look at these things that are already in the ordinance. If you don't want that in there, I'm okay with taking it out. But that was the reason I put it there, so that they would know that they could go back and go through that list that we've got set out there saying, "When granting a conditional use permit, these are the things that you should be considering."
Chairman, I have a question. Was this amendment basically discussed by the Planning and Zoning Board and either ignored or not discussed? Or did they have input on this particular type of an amendment, and it's not in here? And you're bringing it forward a second time? Or is this was discussed and agreed by the Planning and Zoning not to put in?
It was voted on, I believe, by Planning and Zoning. And we needed six votes to make it pass. And we only had seven people present. Am I remembering that right, Bob?
I believe so, ma'am.
We did not have enough members at the meeting that night that we could get six.
This was the supermajority that was referenced?
Exactly.
Okay. So it was added, done as an amendment today? You know, having served on a board of adjustment in a other capacity, and also on a planning commission in other capacity, oftentimes with conditional uses or on a variance requirements that be issued only to the applicant, and that was it. So it expired if the applicant sold the property. They would have to do just as Mr. Krogman, Commissioner Krogman said, that they would have to come back and ask for that transfer to be contingent on the sale of the property, so to speak. So I think we already have the authority. I could be wrong, Terry. Does Planning and Zoning and board of adjustment have the authority to put terms on? And one of those terms is this is conditional use for this. Variance is granted only to the applicant?
Right, that's what this would be doing. And that's why I do not object to the change as is. I deferred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that's why I said that, you know, I believe that they took due diligence in this matter. This would, you can always add things into your conditional use permit. But what we're trying to have is a solid guideline. So that's why I don't have a problem with this amendment. It was turned down by the Planning and Zoning Board. But we just need to have guidelines, and that's why we're redoing this, is that we can have something that 10 years down the line, we have a good guideline. And so that's why we don't want to have everything just thrown in and not be fair to every applicant.
The pushback I see on this is every applicant then, who has, I mean, every applicant is automatically, not automatically transferable. So what is the determining factor whether it's not automatically transferable? Whether the decision is made by the Planning Commission to say this is not transferable?
Exactly, just like your liquor license or anything else.
Right, that requires everybody to come back if there's a transfer.
Correct.
Yep. All right, so what we're saying is it's not transferable. The word automatically doesn't have to be there.
It's not automatically transferable. It could be transferable by having a hearing, just like we had today, is what this amendment would do.
I guess the word automatically, they have the ability right now to say that it's not transferable on every action.
But with this, they also have the ability to say it is transferable. It's just that they have to have one more step to just have it.
I'm pretty confident that our Planning and Zoning Board would think they did not have authority to say that a conditional use permit is not transferable. I don't believe our board would think that they had authority to do that. And Bob, you can address that.
I would like Bob or the president of the Planning and Zoning to come forward.
Good morning. My name is Bob Hill, Brookings County Development Director. And with me is Jeff Robbins, chairperson of the Brookings County Planning Commission. We have no problem with the conditional use permit being transferable. We do like the language, shall not automatically be transferable. Because we do have operations in Brookings County that, once we do the land use on it, such as Basin Electric, then it becomes a federal facility governed by their rules. You know, if I went up to Basin Electric and said, "We're shutting you down." You know, you got the federal rules that's going to sit there legally permitted as of now. Unless they violate federal statutes, it would be difficult, I think, for Brookings County. Versus a gravel pit or another operation, by all means. So as long as the zoning board or Planning Commission has a say in the matter, what can be transferable and what cannot be. But to blanket everything that requires a transferable hearing would be, I mean, you'd have to bring the Public Utilities Commission in and everything if you tried to redo a Basin Electric, or even a Valero ethanol plant, or real big plants. Versus a gravel pit, which can hurt local citizens and things like that. Things change on the ground conditions in a gravel pit and other conditional use permits. Mr. Chairman, do you have additional? Here's the statement.
No, I agree with Bob's statement in the fact that there are some entities that it just is not, you know, it's not going to be a good thing to have it, have it automatically renewed. But there are some that do and will, as Bob decided to do that. I think, you know, as I'm listening to this amendment, and I can agree with Commissioner Pierce's comments in regards that the board did, you know, struggle with this and had a good discussion on it. And opted to decide, as we did, that with the supermajority to not, you know, change the ordinance as it's written. But I think it was discussed very well. And there was still, you know, probably some, both could have gone either way if we would have had the full board that night. You know, maybe a question I would ask to Ms. Pierce or whatever on the Thosson City on the board is, if you're coming in, if the land is transferring, you know, right now to get a conditional use permit, you've got to do your homework. There's a full, like, I'll use the confinement feeding operations, for example. You've got to have research done and things like that. So what would that request look like for that renewal? Is something that I think I'd like to see or ask that something get formalized and what that request would look like. Granted, I could see how it would come down with the fact that somebody's, there is a transfer of ownership coming in place. They go to the office, the office has had no complaints, comes to the board. It probably will get rubber stamped to go right through. You know, open for discussion and everything, you know, so we'd have the hearing on it. But if there is issues or complaints, or if there is something that drives some concern, how do we look at that? And what do we see so sitting on the board of adjustment would have some documentation to look at and to follow up on in response to making the final decision on renewing it or not?
In answering that question, I want to say one other thing first, if I could, because I'm concerned about the commission in trying to maybe be sensitive to the feelings of the Planning and Zoning Board not wanting to do something different than what they did. And at the end of our meeting on this administrative ordinance, because there were things where we went back and forth, what the group said, the comment that was made, and Chairman Robbins, you may remember this better than I, they said, "This is going to go to the county commission. We're going to let them make that determination." Because some of these issues are political issues. And so I don't think today, as we're discussing this, that we need to be concerned that Planning and Zoning will think that we didn't appreciate their work, or think that they didn't put proper thought into it. Am I correct on that? So if what you're saying is maybe we need to have a little more guidance in there if it's going to be a transfer, if you're going to require a hearing on a transfer, maybe we could put in some requirements that said on a transfer. If there have been no problems, it's just, you just fill out this application. We could have a line in there that you fill out the application. If, and on that application, the zoning official can determine what would be required to be submitted. I don't think, for example, on a CAFO, that we would need all of the things that you have when you originally got your CAFO. What you'd need is some of the history for the applicant and the history for the operation to see if there have been any issues. And that's what we would be looking for. But I think all that could be addressed on an application form.
By all means, and that's what we was looking for. I think that's what the planning board was looking for. Do you want us to literally start with them making a brand-new manure management plan and start in the beginning, or take what they've got in existence?
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this would be something that we could maybe, as an idea of how to reword this or not. But the conditional use permit shall not be automatically transferable. The zoning board shall determine whether the conditional use permit is a transferable conditional use permit. And they would make that decision at that time, would be part of the criteria. Is this a transferable one or not a transferable one? And so the applicant who would get it would know, okay, this is not transferable, or it is. If it is transferable, then they'll make application, or excuse me. If it is not transferable, they'll make application, and then a hearing will be done for the review of the guidelines or the requirements for the original there. So you could review those. They don't have to come up with everything, but like you just said, that's what I'm concerned about with the extra hearing here, that they consider all the same factors considered, that they would start brand-new again. I think it would be, have a public hearing for the review of those requirements for that CPU and see if they have conducted themselves in that manner and done the things they're supposed to. And then they could review the new applicant to see if they have a history of that. But it would leave it in the zoning boards, you know, so if it's a federal one, then maybe it's not transferable, and we don't have to worry about the federal requirement. If it's a building permit to do a business out in the county that is not a major issue, say, okay, this could be transferable. But if there's something that really has an issue for potential property owners and down there, you could make this, this is non-transferable.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have to be careful because in section 6.05.01, power and jurisdiction relating to conditional uses on page 13, it states, "A conditional use permit is transferable, subject to the new permit. Need signing a letter agreeing to the same." So we make all conditional use permits regardless of them, sign a statement saying that they understand there's a conditional use permit in place and that they have to abide by the rules that they sign. So we want to be careful. We just get to make sure that we don't violate number 10 or make number 10 null and void by putting in, unless the language, "A conditional use permit shall not automatically be transferable", moves into number 10 and just bumps it along, and we add additional language to number 10. We just have to be careful there, because when it comes to ordinancees and our interpretation of it, we have to know what we're doing at the zoning office also, besides the Planning.
So could we put this in, this language in number 10, where in change it says, "A conditional use permit shall not be automatically transferable"? And then the zoning board shall determine whether a CPU is a transferable or non-transferable. If it is not transferable, a public hearing shall be having to review the requirements of the CUP already, you know, subject, something like that?
Yeah, I'm sure it could be, but I'm not a legal person that can tell you that for sure.
Neither am I. So just thinking that it might, you know, I like the idea of the review process for something like that. But I also like the idea of planning and zoning board discussing it, what is something that's transferable and what's not?
By all means, and I like the idea of Commissioner Pierce. You put it on another line on the conditional use permit, yes or no?
And then the person that gets that condition knows right up front whether that's transferable or not transferable.
Through our process, through the finding of the facts, is what your thoughts would be at the time of the review?
Exactly.
And then after that, if there is a non-transferable one, they want to transfer it, that there is a public hearing on that. And the Planning and Zoning can review the current conditional use there, and if they have appealed with it and do some research. But I'm just, I don't want it to get into a brand-new conditional use permit. It's a review of what has existed before. And if they've done their job and performed, they should have a good, they should be able to sell it, transfer it, whatever it's available, so.
Yeah, that clears up a lot of the planning and zoning side of the house.
Mr. Chairman, just again, looking at that, and you're saying, well, they determine what's transferable, what's not transferable, but you have no guidelines. If I walk in and I'm going to do a CAFO, is it, do I automatically know that it's going to be transferable and not transferable? Do I have to make that decision when the board approves it and says it's transferable or it's not transferable? So if you don't have a list of items that are automatically transferable and those that are not, it gives no guideline to the applicant right off the bat. He's going to go through the entire process to find out it's not going to be transferable at the end of the process. And that's an unfair upfront. Now, they may know that it may be not transferable at the end of the process. But if I walk in and there's- in and there's, okay, we're gonna not allow KFOs, mining operations, et cetera, to be transferable, I know that upfront when I come in with my application that this isn't going to be transferable. But we don't have that listing. Now, the city does have those listings and certain things are allowed as a conditional use in certain zones and here's things that are allowed and things that aren't and, you know, obviously it doesn't cover everything, but we don't have any guideline. If I walk into your office and I say, "Look, I'm gonna do a little mining operation, it's a little small thing, but it shouldn't be any problem." Yeah, well, you know, is that transferable? If I sell the mining operation, somebody, "Well, no, you have to start over again." And I might change my mind on whether I start at all or how I approach it. So yeah, I'm a little concerned that it's ambiguous to a certain degree. You're going to make that decision as you sit up there, okay, this guy's going to build this garage and we're going to conditional use and put it on this or whatever, and then say, is it transferable or not? You guys make that decision that day and he says, "Oh, wait a minute, if it's not transferable, I, you know, it's not smart for me to build it." So it has implications at that point if you don't know ahead of time that you have some possibility of it being not transferable.
And I would be hesitant to say any agricultural activity is going to be non-transferable. I mean, we're an agricultural-based county. That's why it's a case-by-case basis and you're absolutely right, there is, if it, what's good for the goose is good for the gander across the board.
But what it does do is take care of the problem that I'm uncomfortable with, somebody coming in who has a good reputation and presents all this information about what's going to be here for this conditional use permit, knowing that as soon as they have the permit, they're going to assign it to somebody else that planning and zoning knows nothing about, never had an opportunity to meet or question. And that's the problem that this would help take care of.
And that's a concern I have. You have a difference between a new KFO or an existing KFO being sold or purchased.
I guess my suggestion is to somewhere along the line, establish what you're, you absolutely know is not going to be transferable. I mean, you still have that option within the Planning and Zoning Board or the Board of Adjustment to say, "We're not going to make this transferable," whether it's the building site or it's the mining site. But if you know that you don't want KFOs to be transferable and you don't want mining operations to be transferable, put it in your ordinance that those things are referable or not transferable, I should say, and require a second revaluation, whatever that might be. So it just takes the gray area out. Right now, there's a lot of gray area and I'm not comfortable with that. As an applicant, I want to know, is this transferable, there isn't this when I start out with it. Right now, everything could be, every application right now by the Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning could be issued only to the applicant. Is that correct, Terry? Every one could be issued only to the applicant. So the ability to do that now is available.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want you to understand is that is available.
And then if they transfer it, they have to submit a letter to us saying that they, the new owners of the facility understands that they have to abide by the requirements of the conditioning.
Exactly, so we're covered right now for what this says. If the Board of Adjustment makes that determination or the planning and zoning makes that determination with every applicant that comes in, everybody's subject to your review. Not automatically transferable. I just don't know that I see the need for this is what I'm concerned about. You already have the authority on every review that you make. You should make that decision whether it's referable or not. And that happens on all kinds of conditional uses. We look at it and say, "Look, I don't think this should be transferable." And it either passes or it doesn't at that point in time. It's just a thought.
Well, maybe a comment I could make on it is, it's just, it's just something that the board hasn't considered in the past. You know, we've looked at number 10 and, you know, that's, that's, is transferable, subject to the new signing a letter agreeing to the terms of pre, you know, previously stated in the search. So that action, but that doesn't drive it to the board in doing that. And, you know, in sitting as chairman of the board, it's just nothing that is pointed to or directed to. But we do go through this issue, Commissioner Bartley, you know, the finding of the facts, and that's not addressed in that finding of the facts. It could be.
Yeah, well, that's my point.
Is at time. So just comment for the commission.
And what I'm hearing is maybe we could do a compromise here if you're interested in saying that certain types of conditional use permits would not be automatically transferable, the mining and the KFOs. And Mr. Hill, I'd rely on you if there's some other groups that would be in there and that any other type of conditional use permit would be one of the factors that the commission would determine is whether or not that would be transferable and that would be listed on the permit itself that that would be transferable.
Right, and that would allow the public to weigh in on whether they think it ought to be transferable or not at a public hearing before those two boards. They could come in and say, "Look, it looks like this is going to pass, but we'd prefer it not be transferable." And they could determine whether they put that restriction on or not.
Yeah, we could produce a list. I can't produce a list off the top of my head. We'd want to go back in our conditional uses for like 10 years and see what types there are. There might be firework stands, you know, a conditional use permit for a firework stand today in one place might be great, but if the city limits pushes out, then that automatically makes that one, we wouldn't want to transfer that one in the county because then it would go over to a municipality. So there's a lot of variables.
And that's a very good point because a conditional use permit at this location today may be perfect, but 50 years from now, that might not be in Brookings County's best interest to allow that conditional use to continue if there's a change of ownership. And we would keep some ability to review that.
I guess, you know, Commissioner Bartley, I'm hesitant to start identifying because where does that list start and where does that list stop? And if you do a blanket that all KFOs or all firework stand or all this, it's like you lose the ability to look at the applicant, look at the area and say, you know what, this just makes sense. And instead, they gotta, it's a blanketed type of thing. I understand not the notice, but I think if we left it open, we'd let that zoning board determine what they feel is. So the next two or three KFOs, they show that, you know what, this is not transferable. Got a pretty good idea that another KFO coming in is going to say it's not transferable, but I think when you start identifying and maybe somebody's not on the list and you deny them or want them for non-transferable, they're going, "This wasn't on the list, why am I getting that?" So I'm hesitant to start naming things that are automatically non-transferable. I think we leave it up to the zoning to hear the individuals and the situation and they can make that decision and this gives them that ability. Like, you know, Chair Robbins said, you know what, we hadn't used this as an opportunity before. This tells us that we can. And I think during that conversation, during that there, there's a chance that it's not transferable, that that person needs to understand that. And if they're doing it for themselves, they shouldn't have a problem with it. But if they're doing it on the main purpose to transfer it, they're knowing upfront that they may not get it because, and it's not transferable. So I'm reluctant to start naming them. I kind of like it the way it is and the communication, you know, they'll see what happens at that zoning board and what they're willing to do.
I'm not sure where that left us.
We have your amendment.
We have your amendment, yeah.
Can we table this amendment at this time? Go through the rest of our conversation? Because I think there, we're going to need, whatever we're going to be doing, we might need a clean copy of this before we vote on it and get some language. I think what I heard everybody say, but you tell me if I'm wrong, and maybe Terry would have an opportunity to draft if so, that this isn't exactly what we want, but that you all are in favor of the Planning and Zoning Board looking at the transferability issue, okay, at the time that the conditional use permit is granted? And that we would like some language to replace number 10 that would allow them to do that and to make a determination whether or not a condition, that particular conditional use permit should be transferable or not. Is that?
I, and this, just for guidance, I basically have heard like a conditional use permit should not be automatically transferable. Zoning board shall, or zoning official shall determine whether the existing conditional use permit is transferable. Should the zoning official determine the existing conditional use permit is not transferable, an applicant may ask for a hearing to be held to determine whether it should be granted and the conditional use transferable in accordance with our statute.
That's kind of what I had thrown out there. I don't know if we want to do a substitute amendment or a change to the amendment, but...
I don't think the zoning official should be the one making the determination.
You want the board?
Yeah.
Board.
Yeah. So it would be the zoning board shall determine whether the existing conditional use permit is transferable. Should the zoning board determine the existing conditional use permit is not transferable, a hearing may be held to determine whether the applicant shall be granted the transfer of the conditional use.
So I guess, just listening to you there, it seemed like there was a hearing right after that to determine whether it's transferable or not. I wonder if after they determine it's a transferable or not, you say, "If the conditional use applicant wishes to transfer it in the future, a hearing shall be there to determine that." I guess that's what I was thinking. I mean, because it sounded like there was a hearing right after, when you read that.
Oh, it just says, "A hearing may be held."
Okay, I just didn't know if they want to transfer it. The only time the hearing needs to be held is if they want to transfer it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what it states. It's just whether the existing conditional use permit is transferable. Should the zoning board determine the existing conditional use permit is not transferable, a hearing may be held to determine whether the applicant shall be granted a transfer of the conditional use permit.
Okay, it just sounded like right away the hearing would be going on.
Well, that was my concern, that the Planning and Zoning Board says this is not transferable and they pass it and it's not transferable, the applicant says, "Well, wait a minute, I want a hearing on whether it's transferable or not right now." That doesn't say that, what you just, that's how I read it or heard it too.
Mr. Chairman, what you're referring to would be discussed during the actual hearing itself. This is all happening during the hearing. If it comes up that it's not transferable, then the applicant has a chance to say, "Well, why not?" And all that, wouldn't be an additional hearing. The additional hearing would be if someone comes in and wants to transfer it at a later time.
I just, again, I go back to the guidelines that are used in many of these zoning things or these things are automatically not transferable and a KFO might be one of them. Mining might be one of them. There may even be only four or five that are absolutely not transferable, have to be reconsidered if it's transferred.
It is dangerous anytime you mention anything such as, Commissioner, I mean, it could be a hairdressing, it could be a woman that does hairdressing out there, or it could be, it could be literally anything. I hate to put the name of any type of conditional use permit because we've got so many of them out in the county.
So I, again, I didn't want to make, I just didn't want the wording to get ambiguous and somebody read it another way, which tends to happen.
I'm uncomfortable with us adopting wording that we haven't seen in writing on this very important issue.
I agree.
That's why I'd like to go back to LeAnn, your commissioner.
I didn't make a motion to table, but what I'm going to do is make a motion to withdraw my motion to amend, okay?
Right, so, but...
Is that the right procedure to follow?
Yeah, and then I got a second, but are we going to continue on discussing all these and do that because I'd like to have that in there? I mean, so you withdrawing it, takes it out, but...
We just need some new language to, we do want to, we do want to amend that, but we want to amend it with the correct language.
So are we going to ask those changes to be put in there or are we going to just go down through a list and make changes that we want? Do we vote on those changes? I think, you know, I mean, right now, it seems like there's a consensus for this, but nothing's been voted on.
LeAnn had a motion to remove this. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Well, you okay to as a person to move, no, except it is a second and that takes care of it.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to remove this from...
The amendment.
Right, call roll, please.
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ryan, do you have?
Well, no, I just, I just want to make sure.
Do you want to clarify the amendment that Terry has and bring that forward or...
I think we can work, we can work on it and stuff too, I don't know. I just...
I don't think we quite have the language right yet.
Yeah, I'd like, I guess, I want to, I guess I want to see what the process is going forward here if, you know, I was expecting, you know, our state's attorney had some changes, we had some changes that we would agree on it and we get it passed. And so now we're, you know, we made some changes and I think we agree to them, but we're not going to do it because of wording. And so where do we go from here, I guess? Do we just start making changes and come back and look at it again and do it that way or...
I think we need to bring it back.
Yeah.
I think we should walk through the rest of it, see what else, if anything, we want changed. And then Stacy, I think we'd have to notice it for another hearing and have the proper language. Am I correct on that?
Yes, we'd want to notice it for another second hearing, second reading, second... Then we'd probably start over, first reading, second reading.
That's my point.
Yeah.
We voted to remove the amendment.
It's not the same way we can't agree to the language now.
Okay, well, let's think about that. Could we move on to our other issues and maybe Terry will be working on that a little bit while we...
That's fine. If it's fine with languages, that's fine. If you think it's going to cover it, I just worry that another hearing is going to be called just for that at another time rather than... My intent was for the hearing to happen at the time of application of transferability, not an additional hearing right after.
Well, basically what I'm hearing is I just make sure there's some wording that says an applicant may request an additional hearing on the transferability of the conditional use permit, transfer of the conditional use permit.
That's not, that's my, I'm not for that. I'm more that if there is a request for transferability of there and it's a non-transferable type of thing, that a hearing would have to happen to see if they would do. That's all I'm asking for is, I shouldn't say it's all I'm asking for, but I want to make sure that there's a hearing or if there's a non-transferable situation, that somebody does want to transfer it down the road, they have the ability to have a hearing that says, "We'd like to transfer this and we've done everything and the public has a chance and the zoning board has a chance to listen to them." I think the transferability or non-transferability will shake out in the original application of the conditional use permit.
And I do believe that if we just start, as the Chair Robbins said, if we start putting something like that in our findings of fact, that will really curtail a lot of this issue.
They could put in there and say, "This is non-transferable unless an applicant has an application and then a review of that applicant would be in front of the planning and zoning."
And that does bring up a good point, Mr. Chairman. Under number 10, it talks about previously issued letters of assurance. That should be, what we consider letters of assurance is also findings of facts. So I don't know if we want to add that in there in peripheracies or, but that's what we're referring to in number 10 when we say issued letters of assurance. In the old days, it was letters of assurance. Since about 2007, we shifted over to findings of facts now, per the zoning ordinance change that we did in 2007.
Could I read something and you all tell me if this is what you're thinking? A conditional use permit shall not be automatically transferable. At the time of the hearing and the issuance of the conditional use permit, the Board of Adjustment shall indicate on the findings of fact if the permit shall be automatically transferable in the future. If the permit is automatically transferable, it will, such transfer shall be subject to the new permitee signing a letter agreeing to the same terms as previously issued. And you're saying, Bob, that should say on the prior findings of fact rather than letters of assurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If the permit is not automatically transferable, a potential subsequent permit must apply to the Board of Adjustments for authority to have the permit transferred.
Hearing shall be, you want to do, a hearing shall be formed.
I don't even think we have to have that.
You don't even have to have that because that's automatic.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's fine. That's kind of what I'm looking at.
And if you'd like that typed up real fast, just give me your written thing and we'll ship it downstairs and we can get you a piece of paper like you had typed up.
I'm not, I'm not sure anybody can read what I wrote that fast. I'm not sure anybody can read what I wrote that fast.
But I mean, that can reflect in the minutes, we can change it and stuff, too.
So do you want a motion to that effect? To amend this, to read that?
Yeah.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Pierce's amendment. Call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have another amendment, if I may. I would move to amend the ordinance so that everywhere where we require 10 days' notice in the ordinance, we would require 14 days' notice.
Second for discussion.
And a motion, second. On anywhere in the ordinance that has 10 days, be changed to 14 days? Further discussion?
What was the discussion on that in planning and zoning?
If I could defer to Mr. Hill on that, it all had to do with publication periods.
Yes, from my recollection, typically, we do 14 days now, but I would request that we go, instead of 14, I would recommend a compromise of 12, because there's usually one month in a year, whether it's leap year or something, where we get 12 or 13 days versus the 14 days. But it's a rare occasion, but I... The discussion was, state law is 10 days, or deputy state's attorney recommended 10 days, and the zoning board really didn't make a recommendation one way or the other, from what I remember. It was one of those in the gray area, that they understood our reasoning, and they understood the citizens that had concerns with the 10 days also.
And, Mr. Chair, I would just state that when drafting this and talking to individuals that I consulted, I'm just stating that we want to make sure that we're within the minimum of 10 days, which is required by statute. This does not mean that they can't go over and above that. It's just a threshold to say that we're in compliance with the 10 days. Otherwise, I have no qualms about doing more. I just want to make sure that this is what the state law says, so I'm just recommending that.
Well, I... I feel like we need to give our citizens every opportunity that we can to receive the proper notification. You know, and if we exceed what the minimum is under law, I would hope that they would realize that that's a good faith effort to give them more than adequate notification. So I don't have a problem with 14.
Bob, you said, in the past, you have them at the 14 days?
In the majority of the case, there has been a month or two where we physically can't because of leap year or other federal holidays that get in the way, but...
Because there was talk of 30 days, there's...
If you go 30 days, then instead of, you know, you come in and you apply by the second Tuesday, and then you get hurt the next month, then what you're doing is you're pushing it back at least two months.
Yeah.
At the 30 days.
Right.
And then you're starting to get into a legal thing. Are you doing due process and enough... Are you getting it done in enough time?
Okay.
I agree with the 14 days. You know, 10 days is too little. I don't want to err on the opposite side to where it becomes a burden and stuff, too. And we are now holding things out three, two to three months because of it. I think 14 days, you know, is a decent compromise.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my only concern would be the state statute says 10 days, and you've pointed out there may be some incidences where we can't do that. If we've said 14, then we've got a legal obligation that we couldn't meet. So we're doing it at 14 days as a matter of policy right now? Or just because we can't?
Our goal is 14 days on every application.
Can we establish that more as a policy of the county commission? That it'd be 14 days when appropriate?
By all means, we can make administrative rules as we go.
That we're protecting ourselves, we're stuck with the 10 days that the state requires. Obviously, you can do more than that, but if we then end up with the situation where we did, we say 14, and we couldn't do 14, then we've got an issue. If we just establish it as a policy or administrative rule, then we can cover the 14 days with that, rather than changing this ordinance from 10.
And for every conditional use permit in our office, if anybody wants to stop by, we can pull the folder and give you exactly how many days that notice has been mailed. We keep it on each conditional use permit, we keep it on the Manilah folder. We've got a line where we put every mailing date, notification date, who's been notified, and all that.
I guess my question to Terry is, would it be more appropriate to do it under administrative rules? To say our policy is 14 days?
I think we need to make sure that this is a guideline, like I keep saying this is supposed to be. So when I'm long gone, this is what people can step in. So I think it needs to be clear and concise within our administrative ordinance.
And motion and a second on 14 days. You call roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Amendment carries.
Okay, further discussion? Any more amendments?
Not for me.
Chris Krogman?
Just, I guess, point of order, your first original, I guess, motion was to accept it, but we didn't address the changes from the state's attorney. It was, I don't know if you want to...
My motion was to approve this with the changes recommended by the deputy state's attorney. And if I didn't say that carefully enough, I apologize.
That's okay, and that's what I was hoping you were going to say. So if you wanted to make sure that's correct, I would second that, too.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2017-02, and ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance number 201503. Further discussion?
Everything sound okay to you, Jeff, here? Any concerns you have?
Looking to you guys to tell us how you want to run it. Yeah, I mean, we're good.
Sounds good.
Jeff, how long have you been on planning and zoning?
I got to think, I want to say 12 years?
And you all know from the packet that next month is, he'll be done. And I have sat for three years with him as chair, and he just does an outstanding job for Brookings County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get them cupcakes at the meeting for going away. Just so you're fully aware of that.
That's an upgrade from cookies, so.
Call roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sonia, if you'd like to come back forward?
Yeah, we don't have...
I think we just passed the amendment. We amended, but we didn't... We have to pass the amendment first, and then as amended, pass the ordinance.
So what we just voted on was the amendment?
No.
No.
We voted on amendment.
There was a vote on the amendment, and then there was a vote on the ordinance.
We did have both votes.
Yep.
I thought we had a vote to re...
Correct, and there was...
That is correct.
Did we have a motion to remove the First Amendment? We approved that.
Yes.
All right, then we had a motion for a Second Amendment?
Yep.
We approved that, and then as amended, three votes?
Yeah, motion by Pierce, second by Krogman, to withdraw the amendment.
All right. There is no roll call traditionally on that, but we did do one.
Well, we did do a roll call on the withdrawal.
It's not required, but we did it, under Roberts rules.
And then, motion by Pierce, second by Krogman, to amend what Commissioner Pierce had read in her amendment. Took a roll call on that. And then we, motion by Pierce, seconded by Krogman, to amend the 10-day notice to 14 days. Roll call vote. And then we just did motion by Pierce, seconded by Krogman, to include all of Terry's recommendations with the two amendments.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we followed all the procedures on that. Thank you.
Did you forget what we were talking about?
Keeping me on my toes, Commissioner Bartley.
We're back to discussion of possible action on quote for mezzanine storage construction at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. I believe we were lucky, you were discussing the quotes from Randy and Tim.
Yes, and the last statement made or question posed was from Commissioner Pierce about what had previously been discussed and what was presented in the bid.
Is some of that for security of the contents, or...
Well, to just use the depth of the beam is not even quite two feet, I don't think. And then, I guess I'm not exactly sure. I'm not a contractor or engineeringly, not very engineering creativity there. I'm not sure how those doors would work. If you'd have, then you'd have to have multiple cabinet doors, or, you know, I don't know. There was your pro bono contractor out there the day that I had somebody sitting with me, and he... Well, Tim Austin came first, and Commissioner Miller's husband happened to be there. And like, "I just need some thoughts, input," and... So that is, that's kind of where that came from. It can certainly be something different. But from what I have been provided from others, and maybe that has been incorrect information, the mezzanine is not being used often. But yet, the six-foot space would allow for... Would allow for enough room for viewing, for passing, for elevated 3D shoots, whatever.
And I think where we've seen people viewing is there's a chair up there, they can sit next to the chair, and they kind of lean on the front there, which still will allow room, people to pass behind and move along there, too, and stuff. So I guess I'd like to utilize the space as much as possible, but yet not so much to where it hinges, I mean, interferes with the viewing and use of that aspect of it. So I guess I like the idea of seven feet and six feet, which is kind of, it's not half, but it's pretty close. Allows you to walk in, be able to use that, and probably keep more wall space for different stuff, so.
I just wanted to be sure the option had been considered, because that's what I thought we'd talked about. But it doesn't, if that's what you all are recommending, I'm fine with that.
Well, after I saw the stuff... I mean, I knew there was a lot, but...
My words to Commissioner Miller before we moved, we have a lot of things holding things, and you don't realize all these, all the stuff is inside these things.
That we left, you know, and we had to, so...
The wall at seven foot, is that extended all the way to the ceiling, or is that cut off with a...
The height of the wall is not... It will actually come up just to the bottom of the beam. So as the beam begins to slant towards the wall for support, it will not go to the ceiling. So it will allow for the light, the suspended lighting, to be utilized in both the storage and the mezzanine viewing area.
Okay.
I guess I would, it would be my recommendation to go with the steel as opposed to sheet rock for a couple of reasons. And of course, Commissioner Pierce thinks I'm cheap. I think I'm frugal.
You're responsible.
But I think, for one reason, is because it is less expensive. But the other is that it would better match the ambiance, if you will, of the archery range. And I just, I think it would look better, I think it would blend better. And I definitely feel like she's got to have that much storage space. So I, you know, I'm willing to make a motion unless you want to talk about it some more.
No, I think...
Does that come out of our budget, then?
Or does that come...
I personally feel that our budget can afford it, if it's going to be 4H storage, in conjunction with the office furniture storage. At least the way it looks right now, it should be a feasible expense.
Okay, and if you did have a problem covering it, then you could come to us for a supplemental hearing. And so I'm going to make a motion that we go with the FIPID to do the mezzanine storage in steel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
May I ask which door you would like me to have him install?
Yes, we do not need an expensive steel door.
And I told him as much, but I, he provided both options, so...
I don't think so. Do you think so?
I don't think it should be a problem.
I don't either. As long as it's a door that locks, that's my only concern.
Call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter J, action to unassign $105,000 from assigned fund balance in the building fund for the jail expansion project.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
This went along with our supplemental budget hearing that we held earlier this morning. This takes $105,000 that we have assigned for the jail expansion project in the 301 fund. It unassigns it, moves it back into just fund balance. Then we can take that money and transfer it to the newly created 304 fund, the jail expansion project fund, to give us the money there. And then, and what this is for is, well, we've been spending... We've obviously been paying our architect this year for the jail expansion. Those funds currently have been coming out of the commission department budget under professional services, and that line is overdrawn significantly this year. So we're going to take those dollars that have been spent and just move them then over to this 304 fund so we can account for all of the expenses for the jail project out of that fund moving forward.
Okay, call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Quick question for Sonia, if we're going to leave her. I just started thinking about this. You took off the under area construction?
Oh.
Because we got a bid for both, and Randy there. Now, I'm wondering, though, if that price would change? If we had FIP construction do this and not do that, is that going to change? Is that something we need to consider right away?
Well, that's why I asked him to break that out.
Right.
I don't know that it will change that, his price to do... And I let him know that the reason I wanted it separate was because it likely would be paid for from two different entities. I don't know that the $4,200 amount for the mezzanine storage would be affected.
Okay, but the other one, maybe, though, or...
Well, and my thoughts are, I'm going to... After a little bit of thought, I think it might be best to hold off on that project until the decision has been made on where to relocate lockers.
Right.
Somebody said, "Why would you just build under, why would you just do that when maybe it would make more sense to actually make a..." Like, the way you were discussing lockers that day is kind of an L, and there's a four-by-four beam there, or metal pole, using that as like a corner post, if you will, and actually just creating a wall.
With lockers?
With lockers.
Or with, or building a wall, either one.
Budding up to your lockers, kind of, or perhaps, yeah.
That's, I didn't realize that was a conversation, I just didn't want to...
And so I didn't think, well, and I know that we had talked about Shooting Sports covering this expense. I haven't had an opportunity to visit with them about that. And I didn't want to spend that kind of, spend the money to do something like that, only to say, "We should have done." And I just felt like maybe it would be a better conversation to have following the decision of locker placement.
All right, no, it sounds good. Thank you, sorry about that, I just wanted to...
Moving on, letter K, action to declare items as surplus property to be disposed of.
Move approval?
Second.
And motion and a second. This is a freezer?
What this is, is that ice cream freezer that was out at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure... What this is, is that ice cream freezer that was out at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. And the person who was stocking that no longer works for Wells Blue Bunny. And so it will not be stocked, stocked any longer. So he will take that out, but it's on our inventory list, so we had to declare it as surplus. And I think the BCOAC is looking at us like, holy buckets, we have to go through a ladder rig in the roll. But I said, that's government, we have to do that. And then he, as soon as we get this done, then he'll take it out of there, so.
Okay, is declared surplus to be sold or?
No, he will take it because it was, he's the one that put it in there in the first place.
But it ended up on inventory.
It ended up on the inventory, which it probably shouldn't have. So in order for him to take it back, we have to declare it surplus.
Call roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L. Should reflect that rather than disposed of, to be returned to the owner is what we're saying.
Yeah.
Yes, come off our inventory, go back to the owner.
Discussion and possible action on volunteer board appointments. Letter I, weed and pest board.
I will move approval of our applicant for the weed and pest board. Mr. Ripley is currently on, serving on the board and he was our only applicant, so.
We have a motion in second. Call roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, Brookings Health System Board of Trustees. We have two. Davidson and Little. And we need one, correct?
Correct.
Make a motion to appoint Davidson.
Second.
I have a motion in second for Mr. Davidson. Call roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter three, extension board. I believe there is six, six opening?
Six openings, five applicants.
Can we lump them together in a motion? The five that we have? Or do you want a motion for each? Okay, all right, I'll move that we put Andy Dupree on the extension board.
Second.
A motion in second for Dupree's, call roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Deborah Ford to the extension board.
Second.
A motion in second, call the roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ronnie Parmley to the extension board.
Second.
A motion in second for Mr. Parmley, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Pickard to the extension board.
Second.
I have a motion in second for Mrs. Pickard, we call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll move that we appoint Richard Walner to the extension board.
Second.
A motion in second for Mr. Walner, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we need to discuss opening that one position back up to try to get someone else to fill that position.
And, and that, we can have that discussion now or we could wait till the end of all the appointments. But there are several positions where we either did not have an applicant or we had applicants turn their application in late after the deadline. So my recommendation would be for us to re-advertise those positions where we either did not receive an applicant or the applications were received late. We can consider those late applications in with this next round and see if we get any more interest. And then bring those to you at a future commission meeting. I think at the end, we can have the discussion about the Swift Health Center Advisory Board. I think that's a different subject than this. So I'm proposing that for the one position on the extension. I think Districts Replanting and Zoning Commission, we did receive an application, but it was late, it was after the deadline. And then Housing and Redevelopment Two, we did receive one application, but it was received after the deadline.
Moving on, for Planning and Zoning Commission District One, have two applicants, Linkiewich and Hadsole.
I would, excuse me, move to reappoint Kimberly Linkiewich to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
I have a motion in second for Linkiewich, we call the roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And five, Planning and Zoning Commission District Three.
And that one, that application was received late after the deadline. And then there was also just information from Mr. Robbins had submitted his resignation. So that one, we will need to re-advertise.
I have a question, two questions about that. The address that Mr. Hadsole listed was not in South Dakota. Does he qualify for that district under our planning and zoning rules?
No ma'am, his address is South Dakota, but his address is, is not in the district itself. And for presidents, we have a city council person, now I forgot her name. But she used to be on the zoning board, Kidwiler, Commissioner, Council member Kidwiler. She used to be on the zoning board when she lived in District Three. And then when she moved into the city of Brookings, she had to come off the zoning board because you have to physically live. By our bylaws, you have to physically live in the district that you're, that you're voted for.
And he does live in our, in the district?
No ma'am, he has land in the district, but he lives in the city of Brookings.
Okay, so, and that, that's my question is, is if you own land, but you, I think our rule says you have to reside in the district. Is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
So he's not qualified, this applicant is not qualified because he doesn't reside in the district.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I just wanted to confirm. So we, we really don't, the timeliness wasn't an issue for me, it was whether or not he qualifies.
I think you were referencing Mr. McHugh, not Mr. Hadsole. And that address, although it is Hendrix, Minnesota, it is in South Dakota.
It is in South Dakota.
But he, does he live?
And he is in District Three.
Yep.
Okay.
District One, we had Ms. Linkiewich and then Mr. Hadsole. He is the gentleman, Hadsole, that lived in the city of Brookings and didn't live in District One.
Okay, District Three.
Yeah, they were, so.
But the District Three man, yeah, he, he's got a Minnesota address, but he, his residence is physically in the state of South Dakota.
And his was turned in on time? It was not?
Was not.
And is he the district where we still need somebody?
Yes, so this one will be considered, we will reopen this position because he was, his application was received late.
We're going to, we're going to discuss whether we're going to do that or not. Because I think if we have an applicant that qualifies, that we're interested in, why wouldn't we just accept it if that's the only one?
We can't start that, but we'll discuss that.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
So for number five, we don't have a legitimate applicant.
Five and six are the same thing. We had applicants, but they were turned in after the deadline.
Okay.
Michael.
So number five, we do not have a legitimate application. And number six for Housing and Redevelopment Commission, that was turned in late also. We'll discuss, as Stacy said earlier, re-advertising for these positions.
My recommendation would be to re-advertise for the positions that we either received late applications on or in the case of the extension board, sixth position, we did not receive any applications. So my recommendation would be to re-advertise for one extension board seat, Planning and Zoning District Three and the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. I think Swift Tel is a different.
I don't know if we need a motion for that, do we? It's just administrative.
Just go ahead.
Are you going to be contacting those people that filed late and telling them they don't need to reapply? That you're just going to consider their applicant?
Yes, I will do that.
Do not use his work number until he changes it.
Okay.
The other thing, the other discussion though, that needs to be had is the Swift Health Center Advisory Board. We had one position there, we did not receive an application. But due to the fact that we don't have an interest any longer in that facility because I think that we had spots on that board because we had the resource center. Is this something that we want to continue to appoint people to? Or do we let their terms expire and we just don't refill those positions as they come available? And then the city, along with the Swift Health Center, can decide the makeup of that, their board moving forward. It is, it is a city board.
I did.
It is a city, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I did because we had had a brief conversation about that at a meeting, mentioned that to Jeff Walden and he, he said that he had had that same thought on that. And if we were not interested in, in continuing on, they'll have to change their ordinance is, is what they'll have to do. My, my one concern is, so we've got three people, I'm on there and the fellow that just went off. And then we have another young woman whose name I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Kylie Kramer?
Yes, and her, her term runs until the end of 2018. And I would like not to terminate her term because I just think it's hard enough to get people to come onto our boards and committees and doing that's kind of unpleasant. And Jeff said that if we decided we weren't interested in continuing on, we would just, they would do the ordinance so that we wouldn't put any new people on now and her term would continue to run. And then we would not appoint people after January 1st of 2019, so.
We would still have a commissioner representing on that board?
No. I, I, I mean, the commissioner really doesn't do anything.
No, but.
Yeah.
We, we're on boards that we contribute finances to and we will, I mean, we'll no, no longer have any type of say so in that facility. So I see no need to have a board, a member on that board.
We'll still be using the facility.
Achievement days.
And we do have an agreement with the city that speaks to, to achievement days. I don't know that.
That's what I was just curious.
The, the Swift Tel Advisory Board is just what it says. You don't really do anything.
Yep. But if the city was so choose to put a county commissioner on there, they could.
They could, if they wanted to.
And, but they would want us to say that we'd still like to have one on and, and I guess it's up to you all whether you think we should or not.
I don't think it's necessary.
You don't want another one, right?
So we will let Ms. Kramer's term expire at the end of 2018. Or do we plan then to appoint a commissioner beginning of January 2018? Or that position as well as the position that's open now that we didn't receive an applicant for? They'll, they'll expire then at the end of 2017.
Will that mess up their ordinance if we don't?
No, I don't think so. They'll just need to get it done in the next few months.
And I can, I can reach out to Jeff and to Tom and let them know that that's what we've decided.
It's my inclination to not do it for 18.
It's just a waste of time. It's interesting, it's immensely interesting.
It is interesting, but.
But it's not county business.
No, it isn't. And we're loaded down enough right now.
Moving on, Commission Department Director Report.
In my report, I had included kind of a year-to-date, although it's probably just been over the last couple of months, an expense report for the BCOAC. This was as of, let's see, it was kind of as of, was the most recent. I think this last one should maybe be 11-1, so just the beginning of this month, what we have spent out there. The egg appreciation banquet is coming up on Tuesday, the 28th. And I received an email from Eric Olson and he is asking if a commissioner could give a welcome at that banquet. If any of you plan to attend that, it is the 28th at the Swift Health Center. I don't know if there's, there we go, event timeline, 5:00 to 6:30. So 6:30, I'm guessing that the, the welcome would be at about 6:30. I don't know if someone plans to attend and they could just take, handle that or I need to let Mr. Olson know.
I plan on being there.
Would you be willing to give a welcome? And the agenda for our next eight county or Sioux Valley Commissioners Quarterly Meeting is, was in my, included with my packet. That's on Wednesday, the 29th. That's up at Watertown at their Extension Center. That's over, on the west edge of town where it's been held up there in the past. If you plan to go, I need to know so I can RSVP for that. Yes?
When is it again?
It is the 29th, Wednesday, the 29th at noon of November.
I'll, I'll attend. I'll try.
Okay.
Do we need a reserved vehicle or are we driving our separate ways or?
And then the benefit information is, was included with my, with my report as well. And I apologize for not getting these to you sooner. I got them and I saw them and I was thrilled with the increases or the minimal increases that we did get. And it was about the time that the OAC was in full swing and I got it and it was good news and I kind of slipped my mind after that. So health, the health insurance was a 6.7% increase and 3.7 of that was actually a fee that had been waived that got put on this year. So if you take that out of the picture, it's really just a 3% increase for health insurance. But they had to add on this 3.7% health insurance fee as part of the Healthcare Act. So, so dental increased 2.7% and vision did not increase at all. We did plan for like a 15% increase across the board with our insurances in the 2018 budget. So we are in good shape there. I'm very happy with how those came in. A couple things, we did, the last thing that was included with my report was a letter that Mr. Hill received about being reappointed to the Pipeline Safety Standards Committee. That was in my report. And then a couple other things, I handed out an email from, from State's Attorney, Abigail Howard, this morning. And maybe Terry could speak to this some too. But we did receive or were going to be receiving our payment from the Juvenile Justice Reform Initiative, the diversion program payment. And that is going to be this time 39 successful people, completers, that's not the right, completers. Is that the word that I, that? people, completers, that's not the right, completers, is that the word that I, that's on there? $8,855.73, which is fantastic. So, I think that was right around $5,000 last year, I can't, $4,000, $5,000?
$4,500, I believe.
Forty-five, yeah. So, almost doubled this year, so...
This is the program, do I remember right, from our budget, we spend $26,000 on the program? Is that pretty close?
This would be your teen court.
Yeah, teen court. So, we give 25, I think we budget $25,000 for teen court.
So, we're getting back about $8,000 of that this year?
Almost nine. Almost nine thousand of it.
Okay. So, then, the, the program's costing us about $16,000?
Yeah. We're changing lives. Also, yesterday, I had sent out a number of items about the Historic Preservation Commission Review. If you weren't able to get those, I did print out some things, I know, when I was trying to send them with Commissioner Pierce kept bouncing back, but there was a number of emails that I sent yesterday, a whole bunch of pictures, and basically, those pictures were just simply pictures around the courthouse building itself. There was really nothing special about any one given picture, it was just a bunch of different angles of the courthouse building, but the other things, I think, hopefully you were able to receive in your emails. So, the architects do plan on submitting that by Thursday this week, before the holiday weekend, so if you have any questions or concerns with that, please let me know right away, you know, yet today or tomorrow, so I can ensure that, you know, if they want any changes with that, so.
Where, did you give us a copy of the application?
That is in, I, because your e, because your email inbox was bouncing those back to me, you specifically, I printed those out and set them on your desk this morning.
So, I've got this, and I've got this, but the application itself, the...
It was, everything they sent me was, besides all of the pictures, you should have there.
Stacy, you've doubled, you're basically double-checking, make sure everything is in order?
Yeah, I mean, he's checking off all of the boxes on the application, and he's attaching stuff, so, yes.
So, there is no written application form?
The application form, he had, there was a bunch of things, it was, it was there, but it was, he had a, like, kind of C attached, C attached on that.
Okay, maybe, maybe, I'll come down when we're done and show you what I've got. I'd like to see the written materials, not the photographs, but the written materials that were submitted.
And there was something about the project detail, yep.
Yep, is this, this is the whole application?
Along with, like I said, except for the pictures, everything that I received from him, you have in front of you.
Thank you.
And then, I will be out as well tomorrow and Thursday at the Safety and Loss Conference in Mitchell. This is one of the conferences that we are required to attend to get our platinum level for our, for our insurance. We receive the awards at the fall conventions every year, and we get our Safety and Loss Awards there, and this is one of the conferences that we're required to attend in order to meet one of the requirements of getting that award. And then, again, offices are closed on Friday, the 10th, due to the Veterans Day Holiday. Some other dates coming up, Thursday this week, the Brookings Drug Court commencement, that's got, I think that got moved to the third, no, third floor? Now it is third floor of the courtroom, over at the courthouse, the third-floor courtroom over at the courthouse. Again, offices closed Friday. Monday, as Sonya had mentioned, for each recognition night, with the meal starting at 5:00, that's out at the BCOAC. Monday, the 14th.
Thirteenth, thirteenth.
Is it Monday, or is it Tuesday? Is it? It's Monday, it's Monday, the 13th, I apologize, that's wrong on my report. It's Monday, the 13th, at 5:00. The meal starts at 5:00. And then, on the 20th, the following Monday, we have the Intergovernmental Meeting at Swyftel Center, and that's followed by the Pre-L legislative Luncheon out there as well, and I have RSVP'd for all of you to attend the luncheon after the Intergovernmental Meeting.
What day was that?
The 20th. And then, towards the end of the month, again, will be closed the Thursday, the 23rd, and Friday, the 24th, for Thanksgiving, and then, we just had mentioned a little bit ago that we had the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting up in Watertown on the 29th.
Deputy State's Attorney's Report.
Continue to work on ordinances with Planning and Zoning staff, along with Commissioner Pierce, continue to be busy, happy hobo days. Also, I would really encourage anyone that can attend the Drug Court graduation on Thursday, it's a major accomplishment, they go through a lot of work, and if you ever have a Thursday morning free, it's interesting to see the process and how much accountability there is for the people enrolled, so, very, very good program, so.
How, how many people are graduating?
Just one.
One?
This is our first, first graduate, so it's a big deal, and she's amazing, so it'll be really interesting to give her that recognition, so.
Commissioner Reports and Discussion.
On October 17th, I attended the OAC meeting, and you guys are doing such a great job, and there was good turnout, and it was, it was nice. On October 19th, I attended the E911 meeting, and this whole issue on, on radios came up, and we talked about how we're really going to end up replacing everything, and there's going to be some major expenses coming up. And Ryan, I remember that when you were on that, that group, that you talked to us about how we had reduced what we were paying because we didn't want to stockpile a bunch of money there. One of the things, we did, anyway, one of the things that we're talking about, and, and Bob, maybe you can remember the year that we're going to need to have the new radios, is whether or not we should be considering putting a little bit aside every year, so we, we've got that money saved up, or, or not, but those will be some budget things that'll be coming back. Do you remember the year?
I, I don't have the exact date, but it's coming, it's coming fast.
Yeah, and all of, all of our radios are going to end up being replaced, so, that expense will be coming. And then, on the 19th, I also attended a Lake Park Subcommittee Meeting. We've had three of them in the last month, I won't tell you the dates on all of them, but we've gone through, again, the Lake Park ordinance to match that up with the, what we are calling the supplement, just kind of the overall zoning stuff, and to make some additional changes. And at our last two meetings, we're having a whole new section that'll be in there on resorts, be kind of interesting, some definitions and setbacks, and dealing with the fire and law enforcement issues related to that. So, you'll be seeing that eventually. On the 19th, I also attended the City Board of Adjustments Meeting for the jail. Congratulations to you on the committee for getting that variance to go through. And then, I've had two meetings regarding mining and what's going on, I think some of the rest of you maybe have, have, have done some of that too, and, and I do think that when we get to the mining section of our ordinance, the conditional uses as relates to mining, that we need to look at putting in some setbacks, particularly from our roads for, for gravel pit, for example, and some setbacks from neighbors, and maybe we need to be in our mining ordinance discussing what you do with water that's already traveling through that property. So, those are all, those are all things, I'm trying to keep a comprehensive list, but we'll, we'll see, we'll get to the ordinance, I don't think there's a lot we can do about the issues right now, but the...
I have a question along those lines. In our ordinances, how far can we address that when that's actually policed by DENR?
We certainly, in our ordinances, can say that you have to be, if you're going to dig a pond, I'll use that as an example, that you have to be so far from our county roads or our township roads. I, I don't see that there's any problem with having a setback from our roads so that we protect those, and I don't see that there's any issue with having a setback from neighboring property lines. Those would be things that the county would be entitled to regulate. Do you agree with that, Mr. Hill?
I, I do theoretically, but the question is, do, are we going to expand them for all uses and the, and this will be discussion later on, obviously.
Exactly.
Is it going to apply to all uses, whether it's a farmer building, a pole barn, or is it going to be related strictly to a mine, or it's going to be related to a CAFO? Because we've got setbacks now for CAFOs from roads, so...
Yeah, we, we have those setbacks that have applied to all of those other entities, but we have mining operations that are closer in those setbacks, and they have not been applied to our mining operations.
And they probably should be, already.
Yeah, I just like the mining operations follow the same rules that every other business does as relates to county setbacks, and, and that's what we need to say in our ordinance, I think, but...
And I, if I may, I think also look at reclamation procedures, even though I know that that is policed by DENR, it isn't as much, I mean, the setbacks, I think, are probably an issue, but I think the reclamation procedures are more of an issue than the actual setbacks.
I agree with that.
And we can look at that all, we can also look at that and, and put that in the findings of facts, along with the setback.
And that's an issue that we'll, will, eventually, when we get to the Wind Tower Ordinance, that we need to address, our reclamation issues. I, I think as we're looking at these specific types of uses in the county, we really need to be planning for what happens to those uses 50 years from now. That's, that's hard to figure that out, but at least we need to have a plan, and just not say, by gosh and by golly, it'll all be fine, you know? So, those are things that we'll need to look at. I met with you all on October 24th for the Department Head Evaluations, we had our Special Commission Meeting on bond with SDSU on October 31st. We had Governmental Affairs on November 2nd. I don't think that I really have much to report back from that Governmental Affairs Meeting. We mainly talked about things that I think we're all going to hear more detail about when we go to our legislative meeting, and that'd be my report.
Mr. Chairman, October 23rd, I attended the Mental Health Task Force Meeting that was held up here in the room adjacent to this. We had an interesting presentation by the high school counselors on a survey that they had done with students last year, and the data was, was very specific, and very deep, and very disturbing in some regards, and at the same time, some positive trends for us. So, that presentation will be given to the Essential Behavioral Health Board here in the near future. It might be something that we would like them to make a presentation to us, but you're also looking at about 35 to 40 minutes to do that, but then, we'll get it out to the public a little bit more than, than it has been, and I think that might be appropriate for us to look at. On the October 24th, also, the staff reviews, and on the 31st, the short meeting for the SDSU Foundation, approval of the, the Bonding Authority. On the 2nd, we had an Essential Behavioral Health Subcommittee Meeting to look over some options of how we're going to move forward, and those will be brought back to another meeting here in the near future. Also, on the 3rd, I attended the hospital ribbon cutting, and had to stand up, there was a representative of the county get my picture taken, and the whole thing lasted about 15 minutes, and we were out of there, but it is a beautiful facility, I'd encourage anybody that wants to take a look at it before you need it, to go ahead and take a look at it, because you can enjoy it much more if you're not there for business. It is very well done, and it looks very nice, and I think it's a great improvement to the community, once you get in there and you start to move around that facility and how things have been done, you're not going to see anything really representative of the old facility anymore. Everything is updated and, and very appropriate, and, and very impressive. And that completes my report.
Mr. Grogman. ........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Okay, next week after that, we had, let me see, the 30th, we had an Advisory Board Meeting, is that right? Okay, had one of those there. And then we had our commission meeting on the 31st, and then we met out for another transition meeting at the OAC for a couple hours. And then I went to a leadership meeting, I was invited to by Al Hutton, and we just discussed leadership through Brookings and Brookings County and things we can improve on and things we can continue to go through. October 1st, we had a meeting with another, we had another interview with OAC Director Position. And then the 6th, Stacy and I met with Jason Merkley and the President of the Board for our County Board Appointment Process, so, that's it.
Ryan and I have been quite busy with our transition, almost daily, I'm out there almost daily. October 17th, we had our drainage meeting after the, the commission meeting. At 7:00 was the Advisory Board and we're working through issues on our Advisory Board Meetings. October 18th, I went to the SwifTeL Center to the Business Expo. They did it a little differently this year and it wasn't as well attended as previous years, so I'm hoping that they change it back to how they did it before. So, but, but our guys were there and they did a good job. October 19th, I attended the variance hearing for the jail. Thank heaven we finally got that, I was thrilled, it was a unanimous decision. And I checked, I checked in on the 4-H move. On the 23rd, as Commissioner Krogman mentioned, we did interviews for the director for the BCOAC. We had an archery committing meeting with a very low attendance and we have subsequently, I think, come up with an archery committee due to our new director. On October 24th, we did Department Head Reviews. On October 30th, we had another Advisory Board Meeting. On the 31st, we had our special meeting to give our bonding authority. The OAC meeting for our transition team, just talked through a lot of things. On November 1st, Ryan and I met with Laura and Robert with some additional questions that we had for him. As I stated, I've been out there almost daily. And yesterday I put, Robert and I put a coat of primer on all six of the walls which are built by our pro bono contractor who advised that I not recommend him for more work. And we have hired the director and he helped me put that coat of paint on and I, he brought paint clothes and I have a feeling he'll help me get the other two coats on too, so. I'm sure we, we have the primer, we're going to have to put another coat of regular paint and hope, maybe it'll only take one, I don't know, we'll see. But that plywood kind of sucks it in, so. The walls are good, they're going to work well. We still have a couple things to do. We have to put the heavy rubber on the bottom so arrows can't scoot under. And then we're going to put handles of some sort on them so that they're easier to pull. It takes all I have to push the things, but once you get them moving, they roll really, really nice, but. And it seems that most of the, it's surprising, most of the people who are in the archery range, they're using them, they're, they're moved around and they're using them all the time. So, I think it's going to help us make that archery range be used a lot more than, than what it was and for numerous things. So, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, on the 17th, I attended a basin meeting up at basin, basically safety procedures onsite up there. Then I came down and went to the OAC Advisory Board Meeting. On the 19th, I had a E911 meeting. Commissioner Pierce stated about the radios, some of the challenges with all the radios is you might have mandatory compliance, but by the time you get there, your radios that you do have now are out of date and you have to purchase new software, whatever, it's just a spendy deal all the way around. At noon that day, I had a housing meeting. And then we had the Board of Adjustment at 5:00. We received our variance, which is like Commissioner Miller said, is good to finally get that done. On the 24th, we had our Department Head Reviews. After the reviews, I met with Highway Superintendent Burke out on 34th Avenue, looked at some drainage issues that are kind of infecting Trent Township, one of their supervisors called me. And we kind of looked at those areas. On the 31st, we had our Special Commission Meeting with the Bonding Authority, went through that. And I believe that is all I have. Moving on to number 12, Executive Session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 125-2, parentheses, one, personnel that have a motion. A motion, a second, go on, exec F, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion carried.